I will now call this meeting to order. Board member Megan Casebeer Saleno is unable to join us this evening. We do have a call. And I will identify the closed session topics. Recommended expulsions, recommended reinstatement, public employee assignment, reassignment appointment, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaints, conference with labor negotiator, and conference with labor negotiator, unrepresented employees, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, and anticipated litigation. Is there any public comment? There is no public, so there's no comment. We'll adjourn to closed session. Welcome, will now convene our regular session. Board member Megan Casebeer Saleno is unable to join us this evening. Linguista, I will introduce interpreter. Linguista interpreting and translation will serve as a Spanish interpreter for this meeting. Meeting attendees who would like to listen to the Spanish interpretation of the meeting, please pick up headphones from the table located in the back of the meeting room. This announcement will now be shared in Spanish.
Linguistica interpreting and translation servirá como intérprete al español para esta reunión. Invitamos a los asistentes de la reunión que deseen escuchar la interpretación al español, el ir por audífonos a la mesa ubicada al fondo de esta sala de reuniones.
This meeting is being webcast live and recorded. Excuse me. The recording or webcast may capture images and sounds of those attending the meeting. Any member of the public wanting to provide public comment and knowledge listed on tonight, tonight's agenda, please fill out the public comment form. It's a green forum, it's located on the table on the back of the room. Please hand your form to the administrative assistant, Delia Smart, before the item comes up on the agenda. Please complete a separate form for each item that you'd like to comment on. Ms. Smart is sitting at the table on the back of the room. Members of the public providing public comment, please use the microphone on the stand located in front of the room. The pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by board member Jacqueline Gaby. I will not report action taken in closed session. In closed session on a motion by board member Naylor and a second by board member Gemonian, the board agreed unanimously six zero with one absent to appoint Jose Franco Gonzalez to the position of principal at Valley Oak Middle School. Jose Franco Gonzalez has been employed by Silly Unified School District for four years, where he served as an assistant principal at Ridgeview Middle School. Prior to coming to Visalia Unified School District, Mr. Franco Gonzalez was a migrant coordinator for Tulare Joint Union High School. For three years taught English at Tulare High School for two years and taught English for three years at Animo Ralph Bunch Charter School. Mr. Franco Gonzalez earned a bachelor of arts in English education and a bachelor of arts in Spanish, linguistics and language acquisition from California State University, Long Beach. He also earned a master of education degree from University of California, Los Angeles. Mr. Franco Gonzalez holds a clinical subject teaching credential and an administrative services credential. On behalf of the board of trustees, congratulations to Mr. Franco. Revigions to the agenda and/or enclosure items. There are revised meeting handouts for this evening's agenda. The enclosure numbers are one, two, eleven, twelve, sixteen, thirty-four, thirty-five, and forty-one. Our next item on the agenda will be spotlight on good things happening in the district. Intern superintendent Doug Cardosa and guest presenters.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero, board members and community. Doug Cardoza's interim superintendent. Tonight, I want again spotlight some of the great things that are happening within our district. So wanted to congratulate Visalia's our very own Bryce Melgar. So Bryce is a seventh grade student at Ridgeview Middle School. And he is our current Tulare County Spelling Bee champion. Bryce became the first VUSD student to advance to the semifinal round in the Scripps National Spelling Bee in Washington DC. Just wanted to let him know we're very proud of him. So great job, Bryce. Another group to celebrate, this is the Shannon Ranch Odyssey of the Mind Team. Excuse me. I went too far. Okay, you got me. Okay. Congratulations to the Shannon Ranch Odyssey of the Mind Team placing nineteenth in the world finals. Rosalyn Caseras, Spencer Cook, Candace Combs, Madeline Schaefer, and Scarlett Tepeté competed against over sixty teams, including teams from South Korea, Poland, Switzerland, and teams from all over the United States. A big thank you also goes out to their coaches Carl Schaefer and Jennifer Peck for coaching them to this level. So congratulations to our Shannon Ranch Odyssey of the Mind Team. We also had a team from Lynnwood, Lynnwood Odyssey of the Mind Team. Congratulations to the state champion team from Lynnwood Elementary School, competed at the Odyssey of the Mind World Finals, placing thirteenth overall. We're very proud of you representing our school and district. This is Gabby, Pat Papschitzky, Brock White, Ara Abdel Fatah, Sophie Defti, Cameron Chapman, Julia Vegas. They all competed against sixty teams again in the world finals, again against teams from South Korea, Poland, Switzerland, and teams from all over the US. So congratulations to these kids. Our next thing on our spotlight is information about civic engagement. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Brandon Gridiron.
Thank you, Ms. Cardoza. So tonight, we'd like to acknowledge a few of our students and local community partners who have worked diligently to bring awareness of the impact of vaping on our young people. These students' efforts and contributions helped drive the city's decision to establish an ordinance prohibiting new smoke tobacco shops from being located within a thousand feet of our schools, libraries, daycare facilities, parks, and recreational facilities. And this is just one excellent example of the importance of elevating youth voice and the power of promoting civic engagement. And so if the following students would please just join me up here really quickly, because I do want everyone to see who you are. Maria Hernandez, Emily Luna, Jasmine Luna, Enriquez Martinez, Mystique Green, Jacqueline Ramirez, Jasmine Osborne, Kelsey Curtis, Lucio Ponce Escabel, Camaro Ortiz, Yasenia Gomez, Yancy Lavasan, and Ingrid Hidago. And the reason really I want these students to be recognized is because they've been putting in this work for the last two to three years in our partnership with the California Health Collaborative. And they've worked closely with the city and our city officials to make actually policy change. And I talked to some city officials and they acknowledged that they would have not made this decision had it not be for these students sharing their voice. So thank you so much for your contributions.
Thank you so much. And thank you for being here and us recognize you. And more importantly, thank you for the work that you did and getting student voice out there and helping others understand the power of the voice and getting out and making change. So thank you all. Oh, went too far, I'm sorry. Okay, another spotlight that we want to do tonight is if I say a high school performing art showcase, we want to recognize the event that they had just recently. This is the VUSD Theater Teachers and Students from Redwood, Mount Whitney, Golden West, and El Diamante performed at the Fourth Annual Visalia High School Performing Art Showcase Awards on Sunday, May nineteenth. It was at the LJ Williams Theater. The night included performances from all four traditional high school drama programs, as well as musical theater programs. Awards were presented to each of the high school's outstanding performers and rookie and scene. So congratulations to them on their fourth annual showcase. Let's skip a slide there again. Oh, I did hear. Excuse me. So and again, another spotlight tonight is our PSYCON Annual Leaf Awards. Out of eight hundred and ten counselors serving PSYCON this year, we had three students awarded top honors as counselors. The Friends of PSYCON Ray Burbank Leaf Award was given to these students. So we're proud of and celebrate Nazoni Kiers and David Romo from Redwood High School and McGill Cortez from Sequoia High School. Thank you for being great leaders at PSYCON and good role models for our young students attending PSYCON. So great job to those students. Our next piece is on the newcomers program. I'm going to ask Ms. Claudia Ardon Diaz to come up and talk about this one.
Good evening. Tonight, we would like to acknowledge our high school newcomer program. The teacher of the program is Raquel Renteria. And the paraprofessional that's also part of the program is Maria Pelaggio. I would also like to recognize the newcomer committee. We have been working really diligently in creating clear entry and exit criteria, guiding principles for our high school newcomer program. I had the opportunity, I was invited to participate in newcomer exit interviews. And I don't know what I was expecting, but I was expecting greatness, but I was stunned. The students are just fantastic. So we thought that we would spotlight this program and the hard work of the team. This program is meant to open doors for VUSD secondary newcomers. It also is there to provide rigorous instruction aligned with the research-based practices and create foundational coherent and systematic support. So the committee has been doing a great job meeting together. This is also part of CNI, Ms. Julie White has been part of this. Also, the staff there has been very integral, so we really appreciate them. But tonight, I just wanted to quickly highlight the students that were there. I promised that I was going to say their names tonight, so they're not able to be here. But I wanted to recognize Denise Alfaro, Racima Alcavelli, Obed Alvarado, Yuritzie Alvarado, Jorge Botelho, Angel Cardenas, April Castellón López, Jocelyn Escobar, Axel Garcia Gomez, Ariana Gutierrez, Erin Herrera, Kim Ho, Alejandro Isordia, Alberto Martinez, Cristo Manera, Josué Moreno, Mai Nujen, Naun Ortiz, Olin Pacheco, Anna Romero, and Avra Ann Vargas. Their interviews were excellent. They made me cry. It was just a great moment. It was one of the highlights of my year. So we wanted to share that with you. And hopefully you will be able to join us for exit interviews next year. Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right, our next part of the spotlight is spotlighting on our safe schools and some of the work and things we have in place to help make our schools safe places. And so we're focused on a continuous improvement of systems and implementation of protocols to create safe, secure campuses and facilities in Visalia Unified. So how do we create safe, secure campuses? One of the things that we've done over the past several years is provide single point of entries with secure fencing at all school sites so that anyone entering our campus has to come through the office. We have staff being required to wear ID badges. That is something that we will be implementing next year to ensure that all staff does have ID badges when they're on campus, so that if anyone's on our campus without one, we can walk up and ask if we can help them. But again, to identify who should be there and who should not. All sites implement scheduled training and drills, including fire evacuation drills, lockdown drills, shelter in place drills, active shooter drills. We also have, I say, police department youth office services officers taking a proactive engagement approach with students, staff, and our community. Other things that are current and ongoing. We've established a safety action team that meets on a regular basis for direct input to help us make adjustments at sites. Coordination of communication and systems development with Visalia PD. These are all things that we work on or continuing ongoing. We continue with upgrades on security gates. We're looking at security camera systems. Unique site and building numbering system. We're working with TCU on this piece of it as well as Visalia PD. This is to support our first responders to be more effective if they have to come onto our campuses. We'll refine communication systems to be effectively, to effectively communicate with our parents and community partners. We'll upgrade and check in our check-in and checkout systems for those entering and leaving campuses so that we have a better accountability of who's on campus and who is not, whether it's students, staff, or volunteers. In addition to those things, we are providing a proactive support in our schools with additional social workers. This is to identify students in need and give them a place to go. So additional social workers to support students and families at all levels. Additional psychologists support at all school sites. Additional counselors provide proactive support for our students. Additional academic supports increase student success. Monitoring to be sure that we connect all students with extra and co-curricular opportunities. And so there's a lot of work moving forward to implement these things, but they're very important pieces that we feel will help make our sites much more, you know, a safe place for our kids to be. With that, I also want to introduce Sergeant Mona Whaley. She's with the Visalia Police Department and she oversees the youth services officers in our district. So I've asked her to come up and just talk a little bit about what does it look like with the youth service officer on campus? What do they do? How do they interact? And so I'd like to invite Mona up here right now.
Have to jump. Thank you so much for having us here. For those of you that don't know, my name is Mona Whaley. I work for Visalia Police Department as a sergeant and I oversee the youth service department. Most of you know that we have ten different officers, five of which are at our high schools, five of which are at our middle schools. Each of those officers are responsible for the feeder schools, which is their elementary schools and grade schools. These officers, when they first come into the unit, they receive a basic youth service officer training course that they attend, and then there's an advanced one as well. Throughout their time in there, they go to additional training for child abuse and other stuff that they might investigate. Obviously, our number one priority alongside Visalia Unified School District staff is to ensure the safety of our students, which is what their primary goal is. I don't know who knows this, but last week we did one of our trainings that we do annually, which is an active shooter training, where we were able to go out to Sequoia, assess the building, run through different kind of scenarios that we may encounter at some point. So and this just keeps them familiar and fresh on some of the stuff that they need to know. So we don't just do that. We're also responsible for mentoring and counseling and building relationships with the children that our ladies and gentlemen meet. We do this through the school dances, through the football games, the miscellaneous award programs. And I know that last week, one of my officers went out and did a paintball water squirt gun thing at one of the elementary schools and was able to interact and build those relationships. So we appreciate that the staff allows us to have those relationships. And we want the kids to see us in a positive light, not necessarily just because, you know, we're there as a police officer, but we're there as a friend and somebody that they can trust and work that relationship later in the year. So that is what we do. We're looking forward to. We had a rough year this last year, just getting back into the swing of things. But we've been working with the new admin and staff and that's been going very well and continue to talk about some of the things that Mr. Cardoza talked about and work on those throughout the next year.
Thank you, Sergeant Whaley. So with that, any questions?
Any questions from any board member?
I did have one question for Mona. Sorry if I didn't catch it, but did you say that there were youth service officers at every elementary school? Or no? Or just some days, they go certain days? Got it.
Come on up to the mics.
Sorry.
No, we have ten officers, one for each high school, one for each middle school.
So they just go certain times. I was just wondering if you know when assemblies are? If there could be officers at those assemblies when there is more of a presence on campus? Is that even a possibility?
Absolutely. So what we have been doing recently, because we didn't have them for the longest time, and this is my first year in there, a lot of my YSOs first year in there. So as we've built the relationships with the staff, the staff will call. And in fact, the one last week, the principal called and said, hey, can you come to this event? When we know that there's going to be award ceremonies or that there's going to be something, we're asking them to at least let us know so that we can make a presence. Last week, or I believe it was the week before, middle school graduation happened and we can only be at, you know, a certain amount of places at a time. And I know a lot of the grade schools had them as well. So we try and get in there as long as they're not all on one day, because that's a lot of schools for ten officers. But we also have the assistance of our patrol officers. I mean, they've been on your campus, our motors officers came to your graduations. It's not just us that do this. We can't do it by ourselves. There's ten of us in a very large community. So as a police department as a whole, you know, I believe that our kids are our number one responsibility. So yes, at any time, if somebody wants to ask to have theirs, each of the schools should know which officer that they're assigned to. There should be a spreadsheet and the YSO should go meet with them at the beginning of the year and explain that to them.
That's great. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Any other questions or comments?
I just wanted to make a quick comment regarding the responsiveness. My experience as a site principal and Jackie May Bell vouch for this. I think we may have shared the YSOs, but they're very responsive. Anytime that we needed a YSO on campus, they were there quickly or they would send a regular officer. So like she said, they coordinate with PD and they're very responsive. We're going to have a situation where there's going to be lots of traffic. They'll send traffic officers out. And so PD's been very good and they listen and they support us quite well. So thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is superintendent entry plan. Incoming Superintendent Kirkstrom.
You know, I said this is the first time, well, maybe not the first time coming to the podium, definitely for a presentation. So make sure I get the clicker and the microphone and all that stuff correct. So well, good evening, Mr. President, board members, and interim superintendent Cardoza. I am pleased to share with you tonight, my entry plan is your superintendent. Before I share the details of this plan, I want to thank you, the board, the trustees, the Visalia community for your trust in me and the warm welcome that I've received. I sought this opportunity with this board because I believe in what is possible for Visalia Unified. I believe in this board that said, we want more for our students. And I believe in this community that values and takes pride in its educational system. And I believe in each of our students and staff. So throughout this plan, you're going to see themes of engaging, examining, and envisioning our path forward together. And it all begins with each of you, our community, listening to the collective hopes and dreams that we have for our students in our schools. And then examining our systems and working to align them to produce the results we expect. There's a quote I frequently use, our system, our organization is designed to get the results it's getting. And this community and this board has made clear that we want better results for our kids and everyone in our community. And with this entry plan, we will build for that excellence. So the first phase really is underway right now. This is all about engaging with the community. This is about talking to stakeholders. This is about being out in the community. You know, I'm not from here, right? So I need to make sure I take time to engage, learn what makes this community unique, learn what makes this community special, learn what we value, because that will help inform the decisions that we make later on. And some of the folks here have been fortunate to be at some of our engagement sessions. And so I encourage everyone, every voice matters. And so please be sure to check online. We have future engagement forums coming up. But we also recognize that sometimes people can't get out, can't get out in person for various reasons. And your voice matters too. And so online, there's also a way to capture your feedback in our online survey. All of this information will help refine our plans as we go forward. So please, if you cannot attend an engagement forum in person, we hope that you're able to send an email or complete the online questions as well. The second phase is really about examining all aspects of this district, again, already underway. Identify successes of which there are many, opportunities, and also challenges. And as we begin this work, there's much to be proud of. Think about the impact this pandemic has had on all of us. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that despite all of the hardships faced, our teachers, our staff, and our students continue to show up and learn. Our families persevered and our community supported. There is much we should be proud of, but there is also much to do. So consider the following data points when we think about examining our systems and getting the results that we want. I often say we're pleased, as we should be, but never satisfied. We'll use data like the following to really help us form a new baseline from which we can improve. So for this year's students, about thirty-plus percent are A-through-G completers. Fifty-four percent college and career ready. About fifteen percent of our students participated in an AP class. Seventeen percent in dual enrollment, seven percent in avid. One hundred and ninety-nine internships were completed. And we serve two hundred and fifteen of our special students in workability and I can work programs. And our student voice survey indicated that while about fifty percent of our seniors plan to attend a four-year college, far too many of them did not see that as an option. Fifty-six percent of our middle school students and fifty-five percent of our high school students participated in a visual and performing arts class this spring alone, while thirty-nine percent of our high school students participated in at least one sport. Again, very pleased, but not satisfied. More to do. And when it comes to services to support this learning, we served an average of fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy-five lunches a day. And with summer meals included, we're on track to have served over two million five hundred thousand meals. Remarkable. Over five thousand five hundred work orders were completed in just the last six months. Three point nine million square feet of facilities, including classrooms, are cleaned daily. This year, our buses drove over one million miles. Large numbers for sure, but take into account, we are the thirty-second largest district in California and one of the largest two hundred and fifty in the nation. Board, none of this would be possible without the tireless efforts of our amazing employees and the systems to make it happen efficiently and effectively. I believe that by developing systems and clarity, we can and we will do even better for our students. I believe it's possible to engage every student in academics and activities. I believe it's possible that every student graduates college and career ready. This is just the start. So to accomplish this, we have to develop and chart a path forward, right? We have to envision what we want our future state to be. And that's what this third phase is about. It's about taking all of the aspirational hopes and dreams that our community expresses to us, looking at our current data and comparing that to where we want to be and identifying that gap. That gap in the middle is the plan and the work that we do. That's how we begin to design the path forward. So as we begin to think about that, as we engage, as we examine and envision, we also have, you know, in what, just a few short days, it will seem like, our doors will open again and almost thirty thousand students plus teachers will walk through those doors. And so while we build and envision for the future, we also have to start school. So we've got some work that we have to do immediately to be ready, how we move forward with clarity. So while the information gathered through this entry plan will also contribute to further shaping and refining these goals. So now moving forward, we'll work to create the condition so that every student and staff member is ready, present, successful, and connected. So to be ready, we'll focus on ramping up for the school year so that every teacher and staff member, student and parent, is prepared to start school with the information and tools necessary. But this focus is not confined to just the start of the year, but throughout. So for example, we know that trauma-informed practices are vital to being ready, to being successful. What do we have in place? What do we need to prepare for day one and throughout the year? What do we do when a student falls behind or is ahead in class? Have we clearly communicated with families how we respond to potential safety issues? There is much planning and preparation that goes into being ready every day. Being present. Being present is vital. We know that students learn best when they're in the classroom and the teacher is there in front of them. So we'll look at strategies to support attendance. Be successful. We want. Be successful. We want everyone to be successful. This means we have to have clarity. We have to know what success, success looks like, the tools, training and the support to accomplish this. Does each teacher understand and have the tools necessary to teach to the rigor of the standard? Does every student receive the best first instruction? Do we support the restorative practices necessary to keep students in the classroom? Do we have systems in place to accelerate students who are academically behind or ahead? There is a reason systems with consistency and fidelity of practice are important. Without it, we leave to chance that every student and staff member will be successful. But I want to be clear, this does not mean everything has to be exactly the same. This is not about creating cookie cutter scenarios, right? We know that every student is unique and that circumstances vary between classrooms and between schools. But there should always be a consistent standard that we hold ourselves to as an individual, as an employee and as a district. So in addition to the data I previously shared and why this is so important, impactful study was released several years ago. It was called the opportunity myth. And what it did is it followed 1,000 lessons, it observed 1,000 lessons and noticed that 88% of the students were doing what they were supposed to do, right? Like we, majority of our kids, they were sitting in class, they were doing what they were supposed to do. And this was a national study. But when they took a look at the assignments the students were working on, they noticed that the assignments didn't reach the level of the rigor of the standard. So in other words, even though the kids were working, only 17% of them met the benchmark at the end of the year. The system did not create the opportunity for the student to be successful. Not the teacher, not the student, not the parent. The system did not create the opportunity for the student to be successful. That's why this work is so critical. And lastly, be connected. Tonight, I announce the formation of our One Visalia Connected Initiative. I believe it's possible to connect with every student, to know every student by name and to greet each student with a smile. That doesn't cost any money, that part right there. We know that students who are connected feel better about themselves, have better attendance and grades. Through this initiative, we'll work to connect each student in a meaningful activity from sports to arts to internships, build partnerships with our community organizations, businesses, civic and faith-based partnerships, organizations to create additional opportunities for students to be connected. You know, so often we spend valuable time and resources reacting to problems. Low grades, attendance, discipline. But what if we think ahead? What if we're proactive? How do we create a system that minimizes and even eliminates these challenges? That's the goal of this initiative. For Visalia Unified School District to be known throughout this region, state and nation as the district that connects every student. So with all of these things, what is essential is defining what success looks like, identifying our current state, as I mentioned, and then build systems to address the gap. That's the work ahead. That's the work we're engaged in right now. Board, we faced and community many challenges these past few years. Our world, each of us is forever changed. But one thing remains constant and that's our why. That's our students. And for them, I am both hopeful and optimistic about moving forward together. And so with that, I'd like to introduce you to our slogan for the year. I believe in, I belong in, I am Visalia Unified School District. And so throughout the year, we're going to be recognizing employees, staff members who exemplify this statement. And so throughout the year, I'll be in schools and, and certain people will be receiving a very coveted, I believe in, I belong in, I am Visalia Unified T-shirt that recognizes their belief and commitment in our kids and in our system. And so tonight, I thought it was only fitting that I recognized the very first recipient of the I believe in, I belong in, I am Visalia Unified School District, our interim superintendent Doug.
You know, you have to put that on tonight.
And so board, you know, again, it truly is an honor to be able to present this entry plan. This plan will be posted to our website. We'll also be sending copies to our community partners. I'm excited about the work we've done. Th- this is a system that I am proud to be part of. I am proud that, that you called me and provided this opportunity to be here. I look forward to the great, wonderful work that we're going to do. And that baseline is just that. It is where we're starting from, not where we're going. We're going to be relentless and tireless in our efforts to connect every kid and to make sure that when I attend the next graduations in the future, that when they say, you know, college and career ready students, please rise, that that's every kid. And that takes though, building systems, starting from before our kids even walk into that door, all the way to when they cross the stage. And it takes not just this school system. We alone cannot solve all of the problems and challenges that are exist in our community. It takes everybody working together with this purpose. So board, I believe in, I belong in, I am Viso Unified School District. Thank you. And that concludes my presentation, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
I have a comment. Right now I could just about cry. I just wanna, I'm so excited you're here, Mr. Schrum. I, we heard, this board heard the community that communication was something we needed to work on. And we want you to be heard. So please come to those community engagements and those staff engagements. And if you can't, there's a link, you can express your thoughts on, online. So please, please come be involved with us and we want to hear you.
Any other questions or comments, Ms. Blair?
Um, I'm just so excited about this One Visalia Connected Initiative. I mean, I love the whole plan, but our new slogan is wonderful. And I just, getting our kids connected, they, there's just so much hope for how much more they're going to do. So, and how much, just how much better they're going to feel in school. The culture's going to be better. And I believe that their, their scores will be higher. It's just, it's going to be a great year. So thank you.
Just real quickly, we do, we have amazing students and amazing staff and they have so been wanting to come together under a vision and leadership. So thank you. We, I think we all believe.
Ms. Naylor?
I was going to say the same thing. I know that our staff will rise to the occasion because they, they really truly do embrace our students. And when we have our systems in place to support that, the sky's the limit.
Mr. Viegas.
Yes.
Dr. Viegas.
I think especially not only our staff, but our students. So I just wanted to say, I appreciate you referencing that study. Because when we do set high expectations for students and not only set high expectations, but provide a high amount of resources to meet those expectations, I know that they too will rise to the occasion. And I appreciate your ambition and drive to say, this is a starting point. But absolutely 100% of our kids should be college and career ready and prepared for whatever their goals are beyond high school. So thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the public? Okay, since there aren't any, I'd like to give you my, my thing here. I thank you. Thank you for being here at our district and thank you for the recognition of our interim superintendent. It's been a while and it's been a breath of fresh air. I've worked with the last four superintendents and I know what that feels like. And I know what it's going to feel like. Welcome and thank you. And let's get to work.
Yeah.
Our next item on the agenda is memorandum of understanding between the City of Visalia and Visalia Unified School District for the Visalia Police Department Youth Services Officers for Secondary Schools. Enclosure number three, Mr. Brandon Greer.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero, members of the board, superintendent, interim superintendent Cardoza and new superintendent, Mr. Schrum. So tonight, we are just bringing forward our memorandum to continue our partnership with Visalia Unified Police Department, or excuse me, Visalia Police Department and our partnership to continue what Officer Whaley mentioned tonight, to continue to revise services to our 10 sites, 10, five of those being our middle schools and five of those being our high schools, as we continue to strengthen our partnership with VUSD. One of our, one of our mentionings over the last few weeks is really how do we obviously focus and increase on safety? And so that's one of the strategic plans or focuses for this year with our partnership with VUSD, Visalia Police Department, excuse me. And as we continue to move forward with our partnership with the police department, we're going to continue with our safety action committee and have them be a part of obviously that partnership. And looking outside with our other partnership, partners and organizations in relation to the, the local law enforcement agencies. And so tonight, that memorandum is just to continue that partnership moving forward.
Thank you. I noticed that, that the, the partnership is really that financially also. What is the split here? It's not 50/50. It's, it looks more like it's 55/45?
That is correct.
Okay, percentage?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board? Questions or comments? Yes, Ms. Naylor?
I just, in working at the sites, I just appreciate the partnership with Visalia PD. They are very quick to respond. There's been instances where, you know, we had a situation where our YSO may not be there, but they will always call someone to assist. But I, not only do they help with the, you know, the ins and outs every day, but that positive relationship that they build with students and the students see them in a different light than that police officer going down the street. And so to me, that just helps our community. When they see the police, they know that, hey, you know what? They're human beings. They build that, that connection with us. And so therefore it helps everybody all around. And I just think this is such a great partnership. And I hope that we renew this every single year. So I'd like to move, make a motion to approve.
There is a motion. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Blair? All in favor?
I think, or member Gamoyen had a comment or.
No, no, I was going to do the roll call.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you can go ahead with the roll call.
Okay. And board member Blair?
Yes.
Board member Gabby?
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero?
Yes.
Joy, board member Naylor?
Yes.
Board member Dr. Viegas?
Yes.
Okay. And so motion carries, 6-1 absent.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is general public comment. General public comment on any school-related topic maybe heard at this time. The board asked that any public comment on an item listed on tonight's agenda be addressed at the time the item comes up for discussion by the board. Pursuant to board policy, the board may limit individual comments to go more than three minutes and individual topics to 20 minutes. It is recommended you begin your comments by stating your name. I have two in front of me. Janelle Murphy?
Good evening. My name is Janelle Murphy. Doug isn't going to be here to listen to me since it's mostly about him. Um, I'd like to share my concern about the school website and also, or more in particular, the COVID policies. I was finally able to see my son's classroom two weeks before school was out, which was amazing. And I'm happy I finally got to see his classroom. However, I volunteered to help out with his school play day a couple of days later and was told I would need to provide my Vax card or negative test in order to volunteer, which as always is ridiculous considering myself and most other parents were just there inside the classroom just days before. I went to the VUSD website to try to find what the current policies were, just to find out that it hasn't been updated since October of 2021 and still states masks are required indoors. As a parent, it is extremely frustrating trying to keep up with these never-ending changes and the school district isn't helping with that considering the current policies are not available for us to read. I reached out to both Mr. Cardoza and Mr. Schrum. I was, sorry. I get so upset when I speak to you guys. Mr. Schrum never even replied. And Mr. Cardoza replied in a very unacceptable, rude way. I asked a simple question to clarify what the current policies are, since the website has not been updated. And I asked why those are the current policies. His reply, no masking, thanks for asking. Which I then sent another email asking why Vax card or negative tests are still, still required for parents. And he replied, we don't want volunteers who are positive to infect our students in classrooms. Now here we are, over two years later, and you're still feeding us this BS. And yet another email not answering my questions. How does showing my Vax card prove I'm not currently sick or unable to infect the students? I'm not a doctor, but I'd like to know the answer to this question. So then I sent a third email asking the same question in yet another way. Why are parents still having to jump through these hoops to be involved on campuses? To which he replied, it's about the kids. Now, let me give you my opinion. Those are the responses of someone who doesn't care about their job anymore. And quite frankly, it makes me sick knowing how much money you make and you don't belong here or working with children. If you don't want parents emailing you, asking simple questions, maybe start by updating the website. Also FYI, making it more difficult for parents to volunteer is the opposite of what's best for our kids. Thank you.
Okay, the next person on the list is Janie Rometto.
Good evening, board members. My name is Janie Bass Rometto. I am serving my last year as an assistant principal at La Roya Middle School. I have been in this position for the past five years. During this time, I have worked with two B principals and four assistant principals. On Monday, February 14th of 2022, my current supervisor, who had been at the site for seven months, met with me to discuss a concern about my choice of attire. During this conversation, I also expressed a desire to apply for other positions at other VUSD sites as I felt my input was no longer valued and that I was being targeted and harassed. The following day, February 15th, I received a letter of warning. I was told that I had the right to submit a rebuttal, which I did. On February 16th, I spoke to district personnel regarding this process and submitted my letter. On February 17th, I was again called into the office where I was given a letter of non-reelect as an administrator and was offered a position as a teacher for the next school year. The gentleman who spoke to me stated that this was a no cause dismissal. I again reached out to district personnel for support and was told I'd receive a call from the assistant superintendent of human resources and this didn't happen. I reached out to the board and the current superintendent and the interim about discriminatory practices by my current supervisor and unfortunately received minimal to no support. In addition, human resources took two weeks to let me know that I had no evaluations on file, which being at my position for five years, I find that pretty astonishing. I additionally, I additionally have filed a uniform complaint against my direct supervisor as I believe that I was targeted and released of my position due to prejudice and discrimination. As a district, we have been trained on the importance of systems and procedures, yet we do not have a clear and fair system to retain and/or dismiss administrators in a fair and equitable manner. Board members, tonight I am here to speak up for other administrators who may find themselves in a similar situation. VUSD goal number four states that you are committed to recruit, hire and retain highly qualified and productive staff. My question is, how is this goal attainable without a system in place? When anyone can be dismissed for personal bias and prejudice and not for their work ethic? I ask that you take time to establish a system that is fair and equitable for administrators. I am also here to let you know that I will continue to be an advocate for what is right. I am a member of the community and a parent. It's sad that I don't believe in VUSD anymore because you refuse to address discriminatory practices within your leaders. I do appreciate your time and I wish you the best. Thank you. I do appreciate your time and I wish you the best. Thank you.
Okay, I have no one else for public comment unless there's anybody else that wants to comment.
Good evening. My name is Mira Garcia and I am here as a parent of a, I'm a proud mother of a very outspoken VUSD student. I am here regarding the push for LGBTQ. It's very upsetting knowing that the schools are pushing what the government wants them to push, obviously all the left wing stuff. I see it as a violation of our beliefs, religious beliefs. LGBTQ kids are not being forced to wear crosses. That's, you know, show or respect our faith and beliefs. Everything is just one sided. It's very frustrating, especially when the teachers or the teacher teaching this is a lesbian, talking about how she can't get married in the church and blah, blah. That shouldn't be pushed onto our kids. Aside from that, the fact that a teacher is telling kids that they need to get vaccinated, that it'll save their lives. She's not a doctor. Common sense and now all this proof shows that that's not even true. That is up to each parent, whether they vaccinate their children or not. It's just very frustrating. I had written this whole thing out, but then I think I'll just attend the community events. I'm not alone in this. There's a lot of parents that just, we're just hanging on by a thread here. It's almost like the schools have become the enemy. We have to worry about what's going to be taught at school because I never got that form to opt out. It, it's just very concerning, upsetting and we're, there's a, there's a whole bunch of us that are just ready to homeschool now. And I hope that something changes in Visalia Unified because my son was attending Tulare Schools before and we never had these issues. This is just so left wing. It's crazy. The fact that there's boys going into the girls restrooms is insane. I am not okay with that. Thank you.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Would any board member like to pull an item?
Yes, I would like to pull enclosure number four, the warrant list.
Is there a motion for the balance of the consent agenda?
I move second.
There is a motion by Gomoyan, second by Naylor to, for the approval of the balance of the consent agenda. All in favor?
Board Member Gaby?
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board Member Naylor?
Yes.
Board Member Vegas?
Yes.
Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Motion carries six, one absent.
Okay, now we go to enclosure number four, business services warrant list.
Yes, as made clear before, I have a sibling who is employed by somebody who does business with the district and therefore at a full transparency disclosure, I will be abstaining from any items in which this employer appears.
Okay.
I move, I move to approve item four.
Okay, there's been a motion for approval, Ms. Gaby? Second by Ms. Naylor, all in favor?
Catalina, Blair?
Sorry, I was looking over here. Blair?
President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board Member Naylor?
Yes.
Board Member Vegas?
Abstain.
Oh, that's right, abstain. Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Board Member Gaby?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion carries five, one abstention, one absent.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is 7.1 Resolution of Visalian Unified School District Regarding LGBTQ Plus Pride Month, enclosure number 30.
So I'm going to hand this over to Mrs. Gomoyan.
Okay.
This resolution to talk about this.
Okay, read it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Whereas the Visalia Unified School District has a vibrant and diverse community, including students, teachers, administrators, school personnel and family members who are or have friends or family members who are LGBTQ plus. Whereas the district goals include ensuring a safe, secure, healthy, positive environment that promotes a sense of significance and belonging. Where all students, staff, parents, guardians and community members are treated with respect, dignity, compassion and kindness. Whereas the belief of the Visalia Unified School District as outlined in the district's Student Conduct Code states that every person in our school community has value and the students and staff who attend our schools and their families are diverse in many ways, which is an asset. Whereas an institution of learning, the district must educate students on working together to listen, learn from, comprehend the experiences of others and their family's history, heritage in order to form a more perfect United States. Whereas the California Department of Education's History, Social Science Framework for Grade 11 Students includes examination of the emergence of a movement for equal rights for LGBT individuals resulting in pride events often held in the month of June. Whereas the district adopted curriculum materials that comply with the Fair Education Act, ensuring all groups, including the LGBTQ plus community are represented fairly and accurately. Whereas the members of the LGBTQ plus community still face discrimination simply for being who they are and a recognition of increased fear and anxiety of not belonging generally experienced nationwide by LGBTQ plus students. Whereas Education Code Section 220 is, it is the policy of California to afford all persons in public schools regardless of their disability, disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race or ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other protected characteristic, equal rights and opportunities in the educational institutions of California. Whereas in 2019, the district was identified as the only district in the Central Valley to receive a top tier designation in Equality California Institutes 2019 Safe and Supportive Schools Report Card based on a survey criteria analyzing school climate, school cultural competency training, inclusive curriculum, suicide prevention, and the district hereby considers this resolution. Now, there it be resolved, the Board of Education of Visalia Unified District that the district staff and administrators are advised to review, update history, social science and anti-bullying curriculum as outlined in existing state law. Follow, follow board policy and approved process to provide supplemental instructional materials and/or activities regarding the LGBTQ plus Movement for Equal Rights and the history and meaning behind the month of June being declared as LGBTQ Pride Month. I'm sorry, LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Address the health and safety of LGBTQ plus individuals by continuing to offer and provide cultural proficiency, proficiency training to staff, educators, administrators and school board members. Protect all youth by continuing to comply with all existing laws regarding safe access to clubs, programs and district facilities. Be it further resolved that the district administration shall work to fulfill the intent of this resolution while working to maintain a safe, positive, inclusive environment for all students.
Okay. Any comments or questions for the board?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I, I just want to say how important this is for our students. And I want to take a moment to thank all of our partners and in particular, students who are involved in providing language and feedback on this resolution to really affirm our district as being safe and inclusive and providing a safe environment for students. There are multiple studies and researches which demonstrates how these affirming policies can be life changing and in many cases life saving for these individuals who are often bullied, discriminated against or contemplating suicide. I myself am always reminded of a young man from Tatchy, California. When I was in high school, a young man by the name of Seth Walsh was 13 years old and who identified as gay and was bullied by his peers up to the point where he eventually committed suicide. And I think about how important this is for our students, how important this is for our staff, how important this is for our community members. And I really want to thank everybody who was involved throughout this process. And I really want to affirm the, the slogan that our incoming superintendent was talking about today. I hope when students read this resolution, I hope when community sees this resolution, they know that they can believe in, that they belong and that they are a part of the USD. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments, Ms. Gaby?
No, I think that was very well said. Thank you, Dr. Vegas. Also, thank you to Brandon. I know he, Mr. Gridiron went and really served as a fabulous liaison between the students and the source and worked with us over many meetings to craft this. So thank you.
Ms. Gomoyan?
Yes. It's really important to me that all our kids are connected to the school. And I want to make sure all kids feel safe and belong to the school community. There are people who have LGBTQ values on gender and sexuality, but there are also people who have religious values on gender and sexual values. And right now in this climate, both sides are being bullied and it needs to stop. Every person in our school has value and dignity. And let's treat all people that way. It is not about any kind of promotion. It's that there's value and dignity in all human beings and that is why I'm voting for this.
Ms. Naylor?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, again, it's very controversial, but you know, again, respect for all. I think that's what comes out of this. For me, every student should be respected. Every student should feel safe when they go to school. And, and that's why I'm going to vote for it because I just, it's not just this group. It's all students. All students should feel safe. All students should feel that they're not going to be harmed when they go to the bathroom or they're not going to be forced into something. But they should feel safe and comfortable talking to teachers, to staff, to administrators. And that's what this is all about. And, and again, this resolution kind of spells it out. But again, it's all of our students and I just want to make sure that all students, I mean all, feel safe, secure and supported.
I have a couple of public comments here. One is Erica Hawk Park.
Hello, my name is Erica Hawk Yard and I'm the Youth Program Manager for the Source LGBTQ plus Center. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the queer youth who didn't feel safe enough to come tonight. I'm sorry. I asked you on their behalf to acknowledge Pride Month. A study in the Journal of Analysis and Health conducted in 2018 reported that gender diverse students who were supported by LGBTQ plus affirming policies like pride proclamations had a 56% drop in suicide ideation and completion. That's huge. Additionally, the GLSN data estimated that 1,500,000 trans youth nationwide between the ages 13 and 17. That's more than half of all transgender expansive youth reported they had no access. Sorry, half those numbers reported they had no access to a school restroom that matched their gender identity and only one in three were always called their true name while at school. Also, as a community partner, partner who has visited this semester alone, six GSAs in your district this year that were jam packed with queer kids. There is a need to acknowledge these kids. Pride proclamations are a small step towards creating a safe environment for LGBT youth. And make no mistake, policies and proclamations save lives. Today you're voting on suicide prevention, on pathways to acceptance and belonging. I also implore you to consider that other districts in Tulare and Kings Counties look to you, VUSD, to model school policies and campus cultures. And your pride proclamation has the potential to improve the outlook of youth beyond VUSD. Thank you for your time. Happy Pride Month. Excuse the tears.
Ben Cummings?
I'm Ben Cummings and I just wanted to give a little history about why Pride Month is so important. So on June 28th, 1969, the Stonewall Inn was a meeting place for queer people from across New York City. It was raided that night by the New York Police Department. That night, the New York Police Department destroyed the space. There was a place of safety and security for so many who had been cast out by society and their outrage turned into action. Although the person who threw the first brick may never be identified, the heroes of that night sparked a national protest against the mistreatment of queer people. From 1970 until now, the celebration of pride has been an annual event held in June where members of the queer community protest the idea that we should be ashamed of who we are and instead speak out for the right to exist without the demonization and cruelty that we are afforded every day that we exist. Indeed, from Anita Bryant in the 1970s who fought against laws designed to protect queer people against discrimination, to the murder of Harvey Milk who worked hard to pass those laws, the scales of history have always tipped in favor of those who seek to make queer people feel ashamed about what they do. Anita Bryant's bigoted message of quote, "save the children" is to this day used by anti-queer groups to suggest that queerness is synonymous with heinous crimes so that they can try to banish queer teachers and queer people from society. Fast forward to when Don't Ask, Don't Tell was codified into law and the belief that it was okay to be queer was only allowed if you hid it away and didn't expose others to it. The fight for pride is not a fight for rainbows and corporate sponsorships. Pride is about the right to embrace who we are and celebrate the fact that we exist. While it often accompanies parties and parades, it is fundamentally a protest of the treatment of queer people by the people we live our days surrounded with. This year, we are tasked with battling a growing anti-queer sentiment. Two days ago, we honored the six year anniversary of the murder of 49 queer people at this Pulse nightclub as they were celebrating Pride Month. This last weekend, disaster was thankfully avoided when police arrested 31 white supremacists at an Idaho pride event where they planned to riot and had brought knives and weapons and riot gear in order to attack the pride members. And every year queer kids across our country have to question whether or not they're going to commit suicide because they feel like they're not accepted in their communities. This, or those who seek to stifle queerness have always existed in our country. From the KKK to the people in Visalia who after I spoke last year asking for a Pride Month proclamation, emailed me and threatened me. When the day comes that I can say I'm queer without that fear of that type of reprisal, only then will the need for pride end. I hope that for all of our sakes, this work continues without queer people like myself having to demand action in the face of bigotry. And I hope that this work results in an understanding that we can be proud of someone for what they have overcome, even if who they are doesn't always align with what we believe. Two weeks ago, I attended the Fresno Rainbow Bride Parade and I was brought to tears when I saw the Fresno Unified float with over 200 members of the school community riding and walking in the parade, carrying a banner that said, "V Fresno Unified School District, Creating Safe, Supportive and Inclusive Spaces for All." Mr. Shrum, I'm super excited to have you here and I do believe in VUSD. It's time for us to show that our queer students belong in VUSD. Thank you.
Thank you. All entertaining motion?
I'll motion.
Motion by Dr. Vegas, second by Ms. Gaby. All in favor?
Board Member Naylor?
Yes.
Board Member Vegas?
Yes.
Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Board Member Gaby?
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero?
Yes.
Motion carries six, one, one absent.
Our next item on the agenda is public hearing and it'll be a first hearing on local control accountability plan. I will open the public hearing. Mr. Jim Sullivan, Administrator of Family and Community Services is the presenter.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero, Mr. Cardoza, interim superintendent and our new superintendent. Am I not, there we go.
There you go.
Good evening, Board President Guerrero. Mr. Cardoza and Mr. Shrum. My name is Jim Sullivan. I'm the Administrator of Family and Community Services. I'm here to share with you our three year plan and we are going to really focus on year two and how we are creating systems and structures to help support our students. I also want to remind you that we, we, based on input from our district advisory committee, they asked that we add our federal funds and grants into our LCAP. So you will see that as part of our LCAP this year. In addition to the supplemental concentration funds, which are the required funds that we, that are in the local control accountability plan. Our cabinet met with administrators one on one to discuss the needs of each school. And then in addition to that, I had the opportunity to meet many students. I went to different schools and our comprehensive high schools and went to classrooms and heard student input. Our district advisory committee is made up of parents and teachers attend and as well as administrators. We meet about five times a year. During those meetings, we share district data. We share what is current actions that are in our LCAP. We share the structure of our LCAP. And then we also share proposals of what we are thinking of moving forward. We also share what all the input was from other educational partners so that they can provide us the input that we need for our plan. In addition to that, I meet with our bargaining units and their leadership and they provide us opportunities as well, our input as well. So from all that input, if you remember on May 10th, I shared with you all of the input from our different partners. There was three themes that came out of it: support to students, support to sites, and support to families. For our supporting to sites, it was evident in many of our meetings with parents, every one of the student groups. When I was asking about how do we support our elementary kids better? How could we have supported you better in elementary school and middle school? It was more extracurricular activities. That was very evident with parents as well. So that is one of the reasons you can see that we are asking for the funding for our Director of Athletics. Another one was part in this was is our visual performing arts. You have heard from many of our partners as well that additional support for our visual performing arts. So in there, we have added transportation. The Destiny met with each of our VAPA group. They provided a list of different competitions and different activities that they wanted to go to that was part of their curriculum. So we are fully funding every one of those in there. In addition to that, we are also providing an additional Director of VAPA so that they can better enhance our programs. Also, part of that was, we wanted, I'm sorry, I'm not thinking very well. They also wanted expanded other opportunities for our students. So at the elementary level, we're expanding our library time so that students can access the library before and after school. We're providing additional support for our Avid. As you know, Avid is really focused on students whose families did not attend college. That's what supplemental concentration funds are for, is to really increase college and career readiness. Avid is a major part of that. In addition to that, we have providing additional seven-hour aid for all of our transitional kindergarten classrooms. And also for our middle schools, we are creating a program for our newcomers, for students who are newly into the United States so they can have additional support for success. For support for sites, when we met with our principals one-on-one, one of the requests that many of them had was that we provide support in the area of site-based professional development. So we're providing funds for substitutes, because that was one of the requests, so that they can have teachers go visit other teachers, they can look at data. Another support that we're offering is instructional materials or instructional printing that will provide $15,000 for each site for instructional printing. That provides $15,000 that they can then use at their sites to better their programs. In addition to that, again, we're supporting our libraries. We found many of our libraries need some additional shelving, additional restructuring to make them more welcoming for our students. So we're providing funds for that as well. And in addition to that, it was evident by many of our administrators for additional support for how to access data, how to use the data. All of that's based around data. So that's one of the other opportunities is that we're having an administrator for the instructional technology that isn't funded through LCAP, but the infrastructure is all funded through our local control accountability plan. For our families, one of the things our students really requested was that we help parents understand that transitioning to seventh grade and ninth grade are difficult. So that will be one of our major workshops that we'll be working with. In addition to that, the families, when we met with parents, I mean, you've heard it earlier tonight, was transparency, communication, how we communicate, what we communicate. So in our world, for our district advisory committee, we've kind of restructuring it a little bit, really making more of a focus on transparency and helping share more information out as they request it. So those are parts of our support for families. So as we go forward, you can see that all of our additional funds are really in the themes of supporting our families, our students, and our sites. You can see that we are adding all of these different services that directly affect our students, services for our VAPA group, services for academically for Avid, for our English learners, services for our families. One of the concerns that came out during our meetings was, many of our positions are funded out of one-time funds. So what we've done is, for the counselors and for the additional eight social workers, we do have, one of the questions was, is how many social workers we have? We have 20. Eight of them are currently funded out of one-time funds. So with these additional funds, we're moving the elementary counselors, as well as the social workers, into supplemental concentration funds, because those are all funds that are ongoing. So that's in our budget as well. And that is my presentation.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments by the board?
Just on that last note, you mentioned that those eight would now be ongoing funds. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so all of them?
All of them will be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. No questions or comments? This is information-only, right?
Yes.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the 2223 Visalia Unified School District proposed budget. And I will open the public hearing at this time.
Good evening, President Guerrero, members of the board, Mr. Cardoza and Mr. Schrum. Welcome. Tonight, we do have the first reading and public hearing for the VUSD 2223 budget. We'll talk a little bit about where the state is with their budget. And then I'm joined by Ms. Jessica Villarreal, who is our Budget Director, who's going to go through some highlights of the district budget. And then I'll come back and talk about where we think we're going next. So we start our budget process in January. We start with the governor's initial proposal for the state budget. And then that gets revised in May, and that's what we use then to develop the rest of our budget. And so in that state budget, there were some pretty substantial changes between January and May in the governor's proposal. What we're showing here is that, yeah, a lot of that change happened in the current fiscal year. So from the current fiscal year's adopted budget to what actually happened in the current fiscal year with state revenues. Revenues were much higher. And so when we see the state budget, you'll see a lot of one-time monies in the state budget. And that's because a lot of those monies are from the current year. They're not providing them as ongoing augmentations to the budget. Some of it is ongoing, but most of it is in one-time dollars. And so $16.5 billion of that is from the current fiscal year. The state does it, looks at our Prop 98 budget over three years, so it's 19.1 over three years. I might do this by myself. But it's 16.5 in the current year. So we do know that yesterday, the legislature did adopt a state budget. They voted on and approved a state budget. Unfortunately, they did not do that in agreement with the governor. And so there wasn't that negotiation that typically happens where they come to agreement, the stated opposite budget, and the governor signs. So there's still work to be done. It's kind of a shell budget. A lot of what the legislature had in their initial proposal didn't even make it into the budget that they approved. So there's still a lot of work to be done there. We don't have a final state budget yet. There's differences between how the governor wants to spend one-time and ongoing money versus what the legislature has. So the governor has, I believe it's the next 12 days or so, to work with them and to either sign or veto that budget. And then the state has to have a budget by July 1 going forward. So in the budget that you'll see as being presented tonight, many of the proposals from the governor, from the mayor revise, are not in the district's budget because of those differences and because of the negotiations. When the state does adopt a budget, then we will come back to the board, probably that first meeting in August, to bring a 45-day revision to the budget and the impact of those changes. And so this just highlights the governor's January proposal and where they were in May. The big change in what's in our budget is the cost-of-living adjustment from 5.33% in January to 6.56 in May. Other proposals, like the three-year averaging of ADA, we've also included that in this budget. But some of the additional investments for LCFF are not included in the budget. So most of this, in fact, everything but, is not in our budget. But this is what's in the governor's proposal, and so we will bring that back once there's a final adopted budget. So I'm going to go ahead and turn this over. Good?
So in the governor's mayor revision, there's a list of assumptions that we use to build the 2223 budget. I don't know what's happening. Also, as part of that, so that, as Mr. Hernandez mentioned, it includes a 6.56% COLA. Thank you. Just make it worse. Okay, let's try this again. So when the governor releases the mayor revision, as part of that, we build our 2223 budget with the assumptions that are included, such as the 6.56 COLA for LCFF, the increase in STIRS and PERS, both respectively, over a 2% increase, which is significant for our budget. It's approximately a $5 million increase for us. Our state categorical programs also receive the 6.56% COLA, such as special ed and CTE. For 2223, the cap on reserves is now 10%. So we're showing an 8.75% reserve. So we're still beneath that, but that cap is imposed for 2223. The budget also includes step and column for salaries and benefits for our employees, but no other negotiations or projected salary increases are included, just a step and column. One-time costs for 2122 are excluded. And carryover is calculated as part of the year-end closing process, which is in August. So sometime in September, those carryover amounts are finalized and budgeted, and that will reflect in our first interim report in January. And then for federal funds, there were no significant changes to our federal programs. So looking at our revenues, for general fund, it's at $414.19 million. Of that, $327 million is for our LCFF. Of that, for supplemental and concentration dollars, that's $58.97 million. Of that, we received a 15% increase for our concentration funds, and that's approximately $5 million. That amount is specific to any increased number of staff that provide direct services to students. So we have earmarked and are tracking those dollars to be able to report on them. For our federal dollars is $36.62 million. And again, it does not include carryover. We'll budget that as part of first interim. And then for our, oh, excuse me, for federal, we also include, that includes our special ed dollars at $5 million, Title I at approximately 10, and our ESAR dollars at approximately $16 million. So that's what encompasses the federal revenue amount. For state revenue, we're at $31.61 million. Almost or more than half of that is for our state, our STIRS-on-behave payments. And for our local revenue is $18.7 million. And of that is $12 million for our special ed revenue. And so our average daily attendance for 2223 is funded on a three-year average. So that gives us a $27,475.8488. So to give you an idea, last year, we had $28,265. So even with that three-year average that we're given for 2223, that is still a reduction of 790. So we are still definitely impacted by the decrease in enrollment. So our district reserves, as I mentioned, is 8.75. The dollar figure for that is $35.69 million. And so looking at our expenditures for general fund, it's $407.97 million. A huge portion of our budget, salary and benefits, which is 86%, had $351.66 million. Again, that includes step and column. That includes our pension increases that I mentioned earlier, and no change to health and welfare. So for other funds, our total expenditures come to $110.52 million. And I have a separate slide that will outline what that looks like. So total across general fund and all our other funds, we have a total of $518.49 million. So again, that's half a billion dollars that we're looking at in expenditures across our full budget. So looking at our multi-year projection that looks at 2223 and the two out-years, specifically for unrestricted dollars. So our revenue for LCFF does include substantial COLAs in the out-years. So for 2223, like we mentioned earlier, is 6.56%. And 2324, it's a 5.38%. And 2425 is 4.02% COLA. So those are pretty hefty COLAs that we're looking at in the out-years. So our revenue reflects that. We didn't incorporate an increase or consider the increase in special ed services. So our contribution there did increase for the next couple of years. For expenditures, the salaries and benefits, like I mentioned before, we just include the step and column, and then the increases in STIRS and PERS. And then in the out-years, we did take into consideration an increase in health and welfare. So our surplus for 2223 is projected at $2 million. And 2324 is approximately $6.87 million. And then in 2425, it kind of jumps up at $20.92 million. So looking specifically at the other funds, again, this is not our general fund. These funds are pretty self-sufficient. They're usually in balance. The couple that I'll point out is our post-employment benefit reserve. That one, you'll see revenue and no expenditures. That is more of a trust account that we save for our retirees' healthcare for the future. And then, and then in Fund 210, there are some budgeted projects that are in there that are expected to come out of our fund balance for that. Other than that, everyone is, pretty much, our expenditures and revenues are within, so. Okay, I need it. I'll pass it over to Mr. Hernandez.
So one of the things that we like to remind about the multi-year projection is it changes every month. We bring budget adjustments back to the board. And so it is approximately correct but absolutely wrong. The out-years, again, as it said on the slide, it doesn't include the impact of any negotiated settlement agreements. And so it does look good in that third out-year. But again, once we have those final budget and the settlement agreements, we'll bring back a multi-year projection that will show what we think that those out-years will look like. So we do expect that there will be some additional relief in that ADA. We don't know what that's going to look like in the final state budget, but we do need to carefully monitor enrollment. Enrollment was down slightly. It's the attendance that was really horrible this year. And that's really impacting us. And it will impact us even if there's a three-year average, because it was lower this year than it has been in the past. The governor didn't provide any specific pension relief, but does mention that, and the additional LCFF funding that is being provided. And so we do have to take that in consideration as well. We're trying to address the minimum wage through negotiations. And again, that cap on our reserves, as long as the state is continuing to build their reserve, then that shouldn't be an issue for us. But we just want to be mindful that we need to maintain a reserve to have decent cash flow and funds on hand if the state does deferrals or there's any downturns in the economy so that we can address that over multiple years and not have to make reductions all in one year. So I mentioned kind of where the state's at. And when we come back on the 28th, we should have an answer for where we're going on the state budget, I hope. With that, we...
Are there any questions or comments from the board members? None? Thank you. I will close this public hearing. Our next item on the... Our next item on the agenda is A3G Completion Improvement Grant Plan for Visita Charter Independent Study, VCIS, and Visita Technical Early College High School, VTEC. And this is a second read enclosure 33, Principal Bill Davis and Principal Michelle Reed.
Good evening, board. My name is Michelle Reed. I'm principal of Visita Charter Independent Study. Tonight, I know we're doing the second read of our A to G grant. We do not have a new presentation. This still is the same presentation from the previous. We could go through it again, or if you have any questions for us, we are here to answer those as well.
Does any board member have any questions or comments on the presentation? It's already been made.
I have a comment. When you look at Slide 3, you have the completion rate in 2021 for VCIS 5.9 and VTEC 11.1. So I asked Mr. Thompson, you know, what does it look like? And it's improved drastically. So I think, let's see, VTEC is 46.4, and VCIS is 18%. So I just want to commend you on that work, and we're going to get even better.
Thank you.
Yes, and adding on to that, I think I appreciate you both highlighting some of the root causes and recommendations, like increasing dual enrollment opportunities and aligning our policies better to meet A through G standards. And so I hope that's something we can tackle and keep continuing to look forward to as a board. So thank you.
Okay, since if there's none, this is an action item.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Naylor. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Dr. Vegas. All in favor?
Board Member Vegas?
Yes.
Board Member Blair?
Yes.
Board Member Gabby?
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero?
Yes.
Board Member Naylor?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-1 absent.
Our next item on the agenda is the K8 I Ready Report, English Language Arts and Math, Third Diagnostic Enclosure Number 34, Mr. Pacina, Claudia Ardon Diaz, Brienne Phillips.
It's on already. Good evening, board. President Guerrero, members of the board, interim superintendent Cardoza, and incoming superintendent Shrum. My name is Andre Pacina. I'm the administrative curriculum and instruction. And tonight, we'll be presenting to you the I Ready data for Diagnostic III, and we'll also be doing a comparison of what we did last year in spring and then what we did this year in spring. So this is kind of like the temperature gauge or the health of academics based on our interim, not necessarily our summative assessment that we'll talk about at a later date. So this is our why for curriculum instruction, and it's really just us being committed to a continuous improvement process as we lead the district in high-quality align instructional systems to ensure all sites are equipped to provide achievement, access, and equity for all students. And today, we're going to be really focused on these three areas, which is being vulnerable and honest, being problem solvers and thinking outside the box and leading and owning our areas of responsibility. Our site, our focus for the sites for 2122 were this. These two areas that we're really going to focus on, and both the English learner students focus and also that we really focus on our college and career readiness for our students. And we're excited because these will change based on the work that incoming superintendent Shrum's doing. And so we're very excited about that, you know, it's beginning to create that clarity, what you all commented on. So we're very excited about that. One of the things here, as we look at the assessment process, I Ready lands in the middle. It's an interim benchmark. So it's really taking that kind of temperature gauge at that point in time that it's tested. And so remember that that's what it's for. It is a lagging data source, because at that point in time, when the students take it and we'll use that data, there's a lot of stuff that happens, right? Even though it's very much in real time, the data, it should be more of us looking at just a temperature gauge, right? We're looking at really this formative assessment time here, where teachers using that data on a day-in-day-out basis to change their instruction. And then the large-scale summit of this at the end, this annual, that's the casp. That's what gets, what students did right before the school year was done, and they do it in grades three through eight and grade 11. And so some things I just want to mention right off the top for this year is that the test was, the CAS test was actually shortened, number one. So that's going to change things a little bit. And then and so we're waiting on the data for that because of that. The state designed it a little bit different this year. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and pass it over to Mrs. Phillips, who is our director of STEM.
Good evening, President Guerrero, interim superintendent Mr. Cardoza, and incoming superintendent Mr. Shrum. I'm Brienne Phillips, as well as members of the board, sorry, and the community. I am Brienne Phillips, the director of STEM. As Mr. Pacina stated, we're here tonight to present our I Ready, I Ready data from our spring diagnostic assessment. On, I didn't advance, I apologize. On this slide, as Mr. Pacina stated, we're comparing our data from last year's spring assessment to this year's spring assessment. What is important to note was last year, BUSD was on an AV block schedule, meaning our students were in school half the time and home half the time. The, which meant there was a variability in the testing environment. Some of our students tested in school, some of our students tested at home. What this led to was an inflation in scores in 2021. This was noted by I Ready nationwide when they compared their data across the nation. And so you will see, especially in our lower grades, we do have a little bit of inflation in our scores in the 2021. So, but this year, academic year, our students took the assessment in school, with the exception of our Royal Oaks Distance Learning, they did take the assessment at home as that is their choice in their learning environment. So our data from this year truly will set our baseline moving forward. Digging into this data here that you see on this slide, we see a growth, looking at our grades three through five. We see a growth from 2021 and 2022 in both our mid and above-grade level students, as well as a decrease from year to year in our students who are two and three grade levels below. Here we have our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade scores, or percentages. And here we see an increase in the number of our, number of students assessed. However, we see a similarity in percentages from 2021 to 2022. This slide is a little bit familiar. We presented, we threw out each of our presentations a similar slide. So this breaks down our growth from Diagnostic I to Diagnostic III, as well as it breaks down each of our domains and the growth within each of our domains. When you dig into this data, you see that within each domain, we did show growth, and we should have shown growth, because that is representative of an entire academic school year. We do have some domains that are showing a bit more growth than others, and that can be attributed to the length of time that some of our teachers and our grade levels spent front-loading our students at the beginning of the year. Oftentimes, we do see our geometry at the end of our academic year, and that is our domain that we did score the lowest in or have the lowest growth in. As we move through, we can see our data broken down by our student groups. Each of our student groups did improve over the course of the academic year. However, we still have work ahead of us. We have spent the entire year working in collaboration through ELRISE with Tulare County Office of Ed, and we need to continue that work. Additionally, aligning ourselves with our special ed department to align our resources and support to, for our special education students. Here we see all of our, all of our schools and their growth over the course of the year. So what is important to remember is that this slide is showing the percent of students that are improving. If a student is already in, and I know it's really small at the bottom, already performing at, during Diagnostic I in the dark green area, they can't show that they're going to improve past that. So this shows our students moving a performance band throughout the year within each of our schools. And here we have our middle schools, which is our similar data, representing our growth throughout each of our comprehensive middle schools. And I'm going to pass this over to Ms. Argandia.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Good evening, board. President Guerrero, board members, community, incoming superintendent Shrum, and superintendent interim superintendent Cardoza. My name is Claudia Ardon Diaz, and I'm the director of literacy. And tonight, just like Ms. Phillips mentioned, we are here to provide you that I Ready data for K8, looking at the third diagnostic. As we look at this first slide that we have here, I know it looks kind of small, but I hope you can see it on your screens. As we examine this data, it's really important for us to, again, just like Mr. Shrum mentioned, to identify the strengths and the areas of improvement. As we look at this Slide 11, it provides us a comparison of data for K6 from 2021 to 2022. So the data that we're seeing today, just like Ms. Phillips mentioned, really is our true baseline. Last year, students, some of them were at home as they were assessing. So now that we have that baseline, it helps us to plan forward, to move forward and see what we can improve on. Again, it reminds us of the importance of quality-first instruction. It reminds us on how we can think about next year as we are, you know, entering that school year. What interventions are we going to put in place? What students need the support? As we look at the next slide here, Slide 12, it shows that students in sixth through eighth grade had similar growth in 2021 to 2022. And as we reflect on this data and look at it a little deeper, it really reminds us, as we speak with students, the importance of really educating students, educating teachers, also having those opportunities of speaking with administrators and team on how I Ready really impacts decisions that we make at the classroom level, at the site level, and even at the district level. As we have an opportunity to speak with our middle school students, we had a chance to provide them with some information in regards to data and how I Ready, for example, impacts reclassification. It was, we are really excited to share that as we have now end-of-the-year conversations with students, many students are starting to see that connection between I Ready and how it impacts, like I mentioned, reclassification. So again, really showing students, that students and teachers, how data is really empowering. And as we even speak with parents at D-LAC, they are also requesting the same, that students are educated, that students are informed on how I Ready really has an impact. As we look at that next slide, this slide provides an overview of how students are doing from K through eighth. And again, provides an overall view as well as a domain-specific information. We would like to highlight areas, for example, if you look at third grade, and as we look at the vocabulary, there was definitely an increase from 24% in vocabulary to 47%. And that's not the only pattern we see. We see that pattern also continuing in third grade. Again, we're seeing, and again, in fourth grade, in vocabulary, going from 17 to, I believe, 35% I need classes. But definitely, we're seeing that there's, that there is growth. But again, we also notice that there's still area for, an opportunity for growth as well, right? So our students still would benefit, still continue to benefit from some intentional instruction in vocabulary. And that's where those interactive read-alouds really come into play, that comprehension in literature. So it's really aligned with the work that we're doing in curriculum. And this also helps us plan for future professional learning, really ensuring that our students have a viable curriculum to support all sites. As we look at that next slide here, we're excited to note again that students, just like Ms. Phillips mentioned, students are making progress in ELA. We have been focusing on English language learners as part of our goal. And we know that if we provide targeted instruction that will support English learners, it's going to also support other subgroups as well. And we're seeing that, right? We're seeing that there was a growth percentage, a percentage in ELs of 14%. We also see that when we compare English language learners, just like Mr. Shrum mentioned, as we look at that data, we're pleased, but we're not satisfied yet. There's still an area for growth. As we look at other subgroups, there's still an area for growth. As we look at the socioeconomic disadvantage, English learners are still below. And again, as we look at other data, there's still areas that we need to improve on as well. As we look at improved placement with English language, again, we would like to highlight that this really is improved placement, which means the students that grew a band, just like Ms. Phillips mentioned. And this information is important, and it's a different perspective, because normally, as a district, we have focus on what percentage of our students are on grade level. But what this is really focusing on is improved placements, which students grew a band. So as we look at the schools here, it's very important that this is a different view of data. It also offers a great perspective. And as we look at that last slide here for middle school, again, that same piece, right? That it shows the amount of students that have improved placement in ELA in middle school. Again, this shows which students moved a band in Diagnostic III. Again, a lot of great work. We're aspirational. We want to continue to grow. We want to continue to provide a coherent, viable curriculum, and we're excited for the future.
Thank you. So we're going to be wrapping this up. And one of the things I did want to stress is that, as we look at the data, right? If we just test, just to test and do nothing with it, then why do we even do that? So one of the things that we did just this past week, last week, was actually meet with all, with most of our elementary principals and middle schools, and we met to dig into the data that we showed you, and even more so, so they could begin to understand what next steps do they need to do for this upcoming year. They were also looking at data by their PLC level, so they could see which grade levels are doing well and which ones weren't. Where did they need help and support in? So that was another piece. So we really truly are digging into the data to make sure that we're making sound judgments and not just moving to solution, right? We would call it solutionitis, right? Just making any solution claim. And so we leave you with these kind of last two quotes. Number one is that every student deserves a great teacher, not by chance, but by design. And so that's why we're excited, as we hear incoming superintendent Shrum talk about systems and processes, because the conditions need to be there in order to have that design. And so we're so grateful as he's coming in and doing that work. And then we were also very excited for him to really share with us the opportunity myth. And so he mentioned a lot of that research today. And one of the points, as he was talking, was that what that research showed was that students spent almost 50% of the school year in below-grade level work. And so what happens is, as teachers, by design, sometimes we're focused on remediating kids, because we need to get them ready for their current grade level. In reality, we never really get them there, because they're spending half the year on other non-appropriate, you know, work. So this, 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 this research basically said that there's four key resources that a student needs to have in order to move a grade level. And so that's great appropriate assignments, that's strong instruction, deep engagement, and high expectations. And those are not things that cost money either. It's really the systems, it's the processes, it's the conditions that set those things. And it says, when students who started the year behind grade level had access to stronger instruction, they closed the gaps with their peers by six months. And so the research is there. It's recent. And so we're very excited for the future. And so with that, we yield, and any questions you might have?
Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, well, thank you. That was information only, so we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. The next item on the agenda is 9.3, Visita Unified School District Revision of Board Policy and AR 5132, Dress and Grooming, First Street, Enclosure Number 33, Brandon Gridiron, Equity and Student Services.
Good evening again, board president Guerrero, members of the board, interim superintendent Cardoza, and incoming superintendent Shrum. My name is Brandon Gridiron, administrator of Equity and Student Services for our district. And tonight, I'm just providing the board an update on our dress code pilot policy. This was part of our pilot process. This was part of our pilot process last year. And so I'll go through this, just to kind of share with you kind of some of the findings and recommendations we had based on the pilot. So this starts off with our Y, just as a Department of Equity and Student Services, our Y is to shape the conditions, really that foster an equitable, inclusive, positive and safe culture and climate for our students, staff and families. And so as we move forward, our collective commitment to this work is to be accountable, be available, transparent, and communicate clearly and effectively the work that we do. We're really focused on supporting Goal Three of our district for our sites on 2021 and creating a caring, encouraging, inclusive environment for our students and adults, and really looking at three areas, safe, secure, health, positive environments, environments that promote a sense of significance and belonging and assets, focusing on students' assets and strengths, and really developing systematic and reliable access to services and supports for students. Not sure if this clicker is working. All right, there we go. And so tonight's presentation is really to provide a summary and context to key elements for our policy, kind of what brought us here, the feedback that we got throughout the year, some of the challenges that we identified and recommendations and next steps. And so as we talked about, the context really, we created three task force. And these task force were created as a result of students' feedback to our, our dress code policy. As we know, our dress code policy prior to this policy hadn't been updated since 1999, and students have brought attention to that. They seen that there were inconsistencies. So as a result, there are three task force that were created, a student inclusivity task force, a community common ground task force. And these task force were then combined to, and also I'll say our staff inclusivity task force, but these task force were combined in a joint inclusivity task force, which really met throughout the 2019, 2020 school year and 2020, 21 school year to provide input and feedback in relation to what should be included in our dress code pilot policy. And so the task force reviewed current policy, which was at the time from 1999. They planned for policy and practice crosswalks to kind of look at other districts and kind of where things were happening. They reviewed model policies from different districts throughout the state. And then they drafted proposed revisions on model language. And then we shared this with stakeholders. So this was a three to four-year process. It wasn't just something that was thrown together. It was actually a lot of feedback. And obviously, you can imagine between parents and students and staff, there was difference of opinions around what should be in the language. And then what we did is we revised the, the, the policy, the existing policy and created proposed language around the new policy. The goal was to revise the student dress code and, and to make sure that it was consistently enforced, there was clear communication in the policy. And it didn't really, it didn't humiliate and shame students for what they were wearing. This was what was consistently brought up. And so we wanted to make sure that the policy was equitable for all students and free of prejudice in relation to race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, and those things were brought up specifically by the students. So the pilot policy, the introduction and the highlights, all students should be able to address appropriately and comfortably with, you know, clothing that they're, they're interested in dressing or wearing, excuse me. And individual clothing should not be regulated based on our perceived, our perceptions about clothing. And so those are the things that were brought up in the discussion. Students must wear appropriate bottoms and tops and shoes at all times, so that was included in the language. And tops must reach the waistband of bottoms regardless of arm position. So if I had a shirt on and my top bottom of my shirt must reach the top of my waistband, basically saying that your stomach should not be showing regardless of your arm position. And so that was the language that was added. And then that shoulders must be covered with at least non-undergarment strap of clothing. And so as you look at the old policy, there was a lot of practices that were occurring in our district that weren't actually in the policy. It was just things that were added, like two-inch strap and put your hands to the side and all those different things. Those things weren't actually in the policy, but people were doing that. And so that was what some of the concerns were, that there was inconsistency enforcement around the policy. And so another thing that was added is that students may choose to wear hats, caps, beanies, durags, these types of things, and fitted jeans and leggings and ripped jeans and shorts and athletic attire. But these things weren't actually in the previous dress code either. So it wasn't restricted from students being able to wear these things. This is, was, was just added to practice in the district. So we wanted to make sure the language was clear there. And so what students cannot wear was the same. It was consistent. Anything that promoted violent language, images depicting, you know, drugs or hate speech or profanity, pornography, anything that created a hostile and intimidating environment, that those things were restricted and have always been restricted from wearing, being worn in our schools. And so one of the biggest things that was really focused was enforcement. How do we make sure that these things are enforced consistently? And as anything with the implementation of something, that's always the challenge, is making sure that there's consistency in implementation. There's difference of interpretation, difference of an approach. And so that's where training of the enforcement is really, really important. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. And here it is. And that's how do we make sure that we should be, that our staff is trained? And what does that process look like? And how do we make sure that if there are questions around how we should go about enforcing the dress code, that we have opportunities to support our staff throughout the process? And then that it is happening consistently across our district? And so the pilot process for us was really to revise the, the, well, create a pilot policy that was implemented this past year and then gather input from our stakeholders, our students, staff and families. And so we did that throughout the year and then provide the results and recommendations to the board throughout the year. So we did that once, I believe it was in the fall. And here we are again in the spring or towards the end of the year to provide that second update based on the feedback. And so the pilot policy timeline was that we would provide the proposed revisions in August, which we did that. And then in fall, we would provide, gather or input, share, get surveys and share the data and get feedback from our stakeholders in regards to the implementation and establish focus groups. And so I had an opportunity to go out to most of our secondary sites to do what we would call dress code chats. And I sat in front of a lot of teachers and staff who had questions around the dress code and was very interesting conversation, but good conversation because it was necessary feedback on what we should do to make it more clear and more effective in relation to the implementation. And then we continue to revise and shift what the language was based on that feedback. And that's why we're here tonight, is to provide you an update on what some of that data said. And so here on the first slide for data, and this was at the request of the board during the last presentation, is to break up the demographic of who completed the survey. So I did that by grade level, so that way we can see how many students and staff and parents and administrators have completed the survey by grade level. And so that's this slide. And you can see the numbers, forgive me that it's small on there, but you can see the numbers of the representation. Most of our K six administrators completed the survey. And then a lot of our, it's split between our parents as far as secondary, high school, and then K six completion there. And then the same thing, you'll see our students at the ninth through 12th grade level overwhelmingly had feedback that they want to provide to us, which is great. And so the survey results, there are a few questions that were asked. And one of the questions that was asked was the dress code policy reviewed by teachers and administrators at the beginning of the year? And you'll see the data, you know, 50, 51% of our students said yes, 55% of our staff, which are teachers, said yes, and 100% of our admins say yes, and then parents around 27%. And so with that, it's really kind of these, and just to be clear, these are the respondents who completed the survey, right? And so we have over 30,000 students, roughly, the, the secondary students were given the survey that would complete it. And then our parents, obviously, you can see the number there as far as how many completed the survey, I believe as well, 300 and some odd parents, let me look at that correctly. Yeah, 566, excuse me. And so this is just representative of the participants who completed the survey. Was there any training or guidance on dress code enforcement? So for staff, 35% for admin, 79%. And so there's some obviously focus area there. How do we make sure that the staff onsite is trained on the dress code policy? Who's responsible for that, right? And how does that, how do we make sure that is happening across our district? And then you'll see, do you enforce the dress code? And so you can kind of see how the breakup is there. It's kind of 50-50 split between, for our staff and then our administration says, you know, heavily that they're doing that. And is the dress code policy enforced at your school based on students and parents? And so you can kind of see the breakup there based on what they're saying. And so we also split this question up. The question last time was, do you believe that it's clear and fair? We're asked to, to separate the two. And so this is the first, do you feel that the dress code policy is clear? And you can kind of see the, the blue is where people would say yes. And so what we're looking at is to make sure that if there is lack of clarity specifically in what areas, is it unclear? And how do we make sure that it's more clear? So that way people can effectively enforce the policy or follow the policy. And here's the responses for is it, is it fair? And so again, there's the breakup there as far as students, staff, parents and administration. And then I just provided a few excerpts from the open responses as far as feedback in relation to, you know, what, what students in, in community were saying. So, you know, there are some comments with uniforms, which at times I would like to wear uniforms, so I don't have to iron everything. But anyways, but there are other comments in relation to just making sure that it's enforced. And I've seen that a lot in every place from students, staff and, and administration is that if we have a policy, then we have to enforce it.
Right.
And so that was the consistent theme across, across the board. And so that just let us know kind of where we have work to do and making sure that there's enforcement. Some of the challenges that we've seen is reviewing the expectations. We've seen based on data that that may have not been reviewed as we would have liked across the sites for various different reasons. Obviously, we started the year off in a pandemic. And when our students came back, that really wasn't the focus. It was getting kids back onto campus, making sure that we had mask mandates and all those different things in order. And so in any traditional year, we would have opportunities to have a rally and go over expectations with kids and have a fun, you know, experience there. But this was not like that year, like any other year. So that was one of the challenges. And then teacher training, obviously having opportunities to bring our staff together and do training with staff in a, you know, room rather than a Zoom screen. And so that was a challenge as well. And then obviously, you know, we said with enforcement, it was inconsistent, in some cases nonexistent. There was concerns from staff and administrators with removing students from the classroom for dress code violations and what that may cause, concerns with embarrassing or singling students out because of their dress code, and concerns with parents and students' response to being dress coded. And then there were challenges and feedback in relation to student attire specifically, the short length, because the dress code policy states that it just needs to cover certain parts of your body, that there was no short length. So it put people in a peculiar spot to determine whether it was covering sports, certain spots of your, parts of your body. And then low-cut necklines, that was often brought up. And then hats, there were things brought up in relation to, should there be hats that are school logos versus any type of hat? The dress code does not allow hats in the classroom, so that's already in the policy. And then clothing brands specifically, there are brands of clothing, as you all know, that may promote some of those things that students are not allowed to wear in school. And so those were the things that were brought up based on the survey data and based on the focus groups when we went out to sites to have those conversations. And so some of the recommendations that were made were creating visuals, some type of dress code posters, some type of brochure, putting something on the website, which that's what we're working on, reviewing expectations with students, staff and parents. And so we'll continue to review expectations with administration and work with our administration to review expectations with the staff and the parents. And then staff training on enforcement. In our current pilot policy, there's actually enforcement guidelines. In any other policy that we've had, there has been no enforcement guidelines. It's kind of been whatever, however you want to enforce it. And so we have clear guidelines, is now training our staff to make sure that they understand what that is and how to go about doing that. And then there was recommendation to add length requirements to shorts and what that means and what that looks like. And so that's some of the, the trickiness in that, making sure that we have the appropriate language. And discuss altering language to shorts requirements, which I just mentioned, and then things about hats, clothing brands, and then continuing to seek students, staff and parent feedback. And so these are the last three questions, recommendations for proposed language to tops. And this was the top response for tops, strapless tops, backless tops and midriffs would be not prohibited. And you can kind of see the responses there from admins, staff, parents and then students. The second one was in relation to shorts for short length. And this is what the responses were, admin 38%, staff 49, 54, 21. And so you can kind of see, you know, what the comments were there. The actual language around the shorts that were recommended here is that it would be self-monitored and that students would just have to know that their shorts have to be longer than their clenched fist if their arms were to the side, right? It's not something that administrator would go and say, put your arms to the side and you need to clench your fist and doing that. This is something that students would monitor on their own at home, and then they would make the determination. That was one of the proposed languages. And then recommendation for hats, that hats would be prohibited. But the actual language recommendation for that, you can see that's pretty low, not very many people don't want to say that the kids can't wear hats, but that it has school logos. So all hats would have school logos rather than any hat at school. And so those were the recommended changes based on the feedback, is that strapless tops, backless tops, midriff and low-cut necklines are prohibited. Shorts should be below, longer than the student's extended arm with the clenched fist, which would be monitored by the student, not by the school. And students may wear sun-protective clothing, including hats with school logos, caps with school logos, beanies with school logos, durags and other head covering outdoors. And students cannot have clothing or personal items on campus that promote any of the things that they should not wear, pornography, drugs, gangs, violence. And some of those brands that were listed, just as examples, would be brands like Cookies and Backwood and Playboy, those types of things not being allowed on campus. And so our next steps would be, we'll, you know, communicate with the team to develop accurate visuals based on that feedback. You know, one of the things that was brought up is Christmas in July, where we have community partners help provide clothing for kids who may need clothing. And then all sites to review expectations with students and staff and parents at the start of the year, as is, is expected. And then based on the feedback from the board and, and the final approval on our second read is to update the dress code policy with the new language and then provide ongoing monitoring and revisions as needed. One of the other recommendations is to continue with existing pilot policy and pilot it again for another year. That just wasn't up here. Are there any questions?
Any questions or comments, Ms. Blair?
Yeah. Good job, Brandon. That was a lot. But I do have a question, just had an idea, you can tell me now. But on slide 24, when it talks about the recommendations and it says create a visual dress code poster, is there any way we could, we could have a contest for like a graphics art so that the kids can have buy-in and their things are usually better to look at than any adults?
Yes. Great idea.
Any other questions?
Yes. Yes. Thank you. I, I think that's a wonderful idea as well. My question was in regards to hats. What is the logic or rationale behind not allowing them in the classroom or only allowing them outdoors? I'm, I'm just thinking about scenarios in which, you know, I mean, I've gotten a few bad haircuts and I'm like, man, I'm just going to keep this beanier hat on all day. What is the logic for not allowing hats indoors?
Great question. I, I think some of the logic initially is, is when the conversation came about, students with hoods, right? You can't see whether they're engaged, you can't really get their eye contact, right? Same thing with hats. Now we have students who wear a hat and their mask and cover up pretty much all of their face and you really can't really see whether they're engaging. You know, for teachers, engagement, checking for understanding, those types of things are critically important. But those things have been brought up by staff and by students. It's like, why can't we wear hats in class? What does it do, right? And so some instances, based on feedback from the stakeholder groups, it was a personal preferences, preference. And other instances, it was a matter of student engagement and being able to connect with students that way. So those were the two feedbacks that we got.
Thank you.
Ms. Gomonia? I'd like to dress the hat inside thing. You know, kids need to understand that the going, they're going to work. That's their job doing school. And if you work, I know when I worked in high school and college at God Chalks, probably people don't even know that store, I couldn't wear a hat, okay? And I had to dress a certain way. And I think it's important that we do have a dress code so kids understand, you know, and start to learn, you know, you got to dress a certain way at your job. you know, you got to dress a certain way at your job. The the other concern that I have, or I don't know if it's a concern. I think it's something that we can work on. When I see that admin, a hundred percent of admin says they reviewed policy with teachers and administrators, but yet only fifty one percent of the students and fifty five percent of the staff say that happened. And so I think there's a gap between implementation, you know, what and I don't I don't know if it's communication, implementation. There's a gap there. And I think if we had consistency and clarity, then I don't think this would be a problem.
If I could add on one, oh, please. I was just going to say, I wanted to highlight one of the comments from page twenty two, which was around possibly providing funds to purchase and wash and dry clothing that's lent to students. I'm wondering, was this an issue or a comment that was brought up consistently? Is that widespread of an issue? I know, I'm sure each site has to deal with, you know, storage of, you know, extra clothes for students who need to change. But is this a sort of reoccurring issue? I mean, I could I could potentially see this being an issue for some of our homeless students, for students who don't have access to maybe a washer and dryer at home. But how prevalent of an issue did you see this brought up?
It wasn't brought up consistently, but it was brought up enough to want to have to do something about it, right? And so to make sure that that access to clean clothing for students is is important. You know, a few years ago, at the site level, we actually used to have washers and dryers and those types of things for PE clothes and other things that we used to do that. Then we had some challenges with outbreaks of different things as a result of that. And so, you know, I know there are certain sites that actually provide these opportunities for kids in different ways. We've worked with our outside agencies to look at how do we offer clothing? So one of the things that we talked about is Christmas in July and having an abundance amount of clothing available to students that need them. But then now the next step is to also look at those other options, right? How do we have these public washer and dryers that are available to students? Maybe at our Community Resource Center, our Family Resource Center, to provide that opportunity or even on site? So we can definitely explore those options as well.
Yeah, I certainly think that'd be a great investment, looking forward, so.
I'm going to like try to kind of ask the other side of it without looking completely crazy. But it seems as though we spend, you know, you only have so much energy in a day as a staff member, as a teacher, and we spend a lot of energy on this dress code thing that could go into student learning. We put students and staff kind of at an adversarial relationship. And so I'm wondering, is there like a CSBA guideline, state law, something that could guide us? Because it's almost like we're daring the kids to stay ahead of us, and they're really good at that. You know, we can say no shirts that say cookies today, and they'll come up with a new word tomorrow. And we'll have another meeting for, you know, they can't wear this shirts. And it's it's like, instead of educating, we're like chasing these, you know, kind of like this energy that's kind of, you know, in a sense, unrelated to learning. The hats, you know, I mean, without sounding horrible, like be more engaging. Like, we should be more concerned that our students aren't engaged in instruction than we should that they're wearing a hat. And short length, I mean, I'm I'm sorry, I have a high school daughter that I drop off and, you know, she's going to hate me now when I get home. Well, she's not watching, but, you know, let's be serious. But I dropped her off and I watched the kids walk across the parking lot to the pool deck. And we have boys in Speedos and girls in swimsuits. And at the volleyball games, we've got girls, I mean, in basically the swimsuit bottoms. So it's just like, I don't know, I guess my question is, is there a way we can educate and say how this distracts from learning, but not focus so much energy on what you can't do? And like these adversarial relationships? Is there like a state like law or some guidance that's kind of like, you know, this is the minimum that you could like send to us or we can start there like with just for a conversation? I don't know, and I'm probably the only one. But it just seems like we're putting people in this constant conflict over something, you know, that maybe we can avoid.
I I would agree. And and what I would say to that is that this is why we piloted the policy this year. And one of the recommendations that were made was to continue to pilot the policy because the challenge was enforcement mostly with rather than what was in the dress code. As you can, as Mrs. Gomonia pointed out, there was one statement that this was shared and overwhelmingly, this is what we did. And then there was another, you know, sentiment that we we didn't get it. And so there is some breakdown there. And so rather than rechanging the entire policy, we could pilot the policy again and make sure that clarity and communication and enforcement is 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 there. But as you mentioned, and I think Mr. Schrum mentioned this tonight, student connectedness and relationships are critical in education. And how we have a conversation with the student about the dress code expectations and support them through that is probably the most important thing, rather than just putting things in a policy and saying, this is what you don't do. Because as we've all experienced, and those of us have been on site and worked in education for a long time, is the dress code policy has been an issue across the state and across the country forever. So we can keep adding and changing and adjusting the dress code policy versus educating and supporting and working with kids and talking them through the actual policy and then enforcing it in a respectful, non shaming way that may serve the same outcome that we are looking to to meet with the the change in language or the proposed changes in language.
You know, basically, this is the dress code. Dress, cover yourself up, don't show your underwear. And that's basically the dress code, you know? And I think it's simple. But again, if there's not clarity and consistency, like, you know, it's fifth period and I'm dress coding a kid, which should have been dress coded first period. And I think there needs to be training, and I don't know what that is, on how how do we enforce it? Because we don't want to shame people. We don't want to pull them out, like Jackie's saying, we don't want to pull them out from learning, you know? So how how exactly do we do this? And, you know, and I don't I don't know what the procedure is, but yeah. So I, you know, I I think we have to have a dress code. And it's simple. But I think the consistency in enforcement and how you enforce it. Because teachers are like, I'm just, yeah, they're, you know, I'm not, there's no dress code. That's they tell me. And basically what they're saying is, I don't know what it is, and I'm not going to, and I don't know how to enforce it. So just having clarity and simplifying it would be, you know, like, cover yourself up. Don't show your underwear.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
The the hat, when I come back, it says for hat prohibited. It was only twenty five percent. And I I I've I've been at the school site and hats was an issue as far as, man, you're fighting that, and is that really where we want to put the fight? I I don't want to fight for hats. I want kids in class. I want them to learn. And nowadays, the hat is, everybody wears hats. And so is that something that we really even need in here? And and because I'm going to be honest, teachers, they're getting ready for their class. They want the kids there. I want my my students in my classroom. I don't want to have to deal with Suzie and Johnny who wear a hat every day because the dress code says that. So I I think that there's got to be some kind of where we get a mutual point. And I like what Trustee Gomonia said. Just cover up the bare minimums, you know, just so that we don't have, you know, don't show, just cover up. That's it, that's simple. It can be that simple. And and teachers don't, I I, as an administrator, I didn't want to check. I we used to say, we're the fashion police. Okay, I I don't want to be a fashion police. I want to, I want to direct my energies into academics and getting kids connected and those kinds of things instead of breaking it down.
I I wholeheartedly agree. And then thank you for bringing up the hat. And in in thinking of finding this happy medium, because I I agree, we we should be engaging. Hat shouldn't be an issue. I I teach students to wear hats all the time. Yes, it is a different setting, but I think it's it's up to us as educators to engage our students. Maybe finding some happy medium, though, in between, like your hat cannot be covering your eyes or must be worn above your brim of your forehead or something. Maybe finding some sort of compromise in that and would be helpful for both students, staff.
Mr. Schrum there's.
Yes, no, thank you. I think this is great feedback, and I think as a team, we'll take this back and revamp a little bit along with the feedback and then come back with something that, you know, can ensure we have a dress code because there are some standards we need to apply across the 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 district for learning to occur, but also be respectful and mindful of the time we're in. And I wholeheartedly agree, you know, we want kids in classrooms. We don't need teachers and others going around worrying about these things they need to be teaching. And so I think we can take the feedback that's been shared tonight and come up with a simplified version that that still gets at what we need, but also allows our students to be students.
Thank you. That was the first read, and it's information only. We'll move on to our next agenda item. The next agenda item is Board Member Reports Request. Mr. Dr. Vegas.
Thank you, President Gero. I was sad to miss our our prior board meeting when I fell ill to COVID. But prior to that, I had the opportunity to shadow some of our amazing district employees, including Rihanna Sanchez, Creekside, and Joshua that Sequoia, two of our behavioral intervention team supports, and really looking at what they're doing on a daily basis to provide a positive environment for our students, guiding them to make positive choices and really be role models for one another. So I want to thank them for allowing me to spend some time with them. I also spent some time with one of our librarians at Divisadero, Wendy Anderson. And I just want to say, I really appreciated how just walking into that library, there was artwork from students featured across the room, students walking in, you know, really excited to check out a new book and really instilling this love of learning. And one of the things I I really deeply appreciated was that she had a collection at the very front highlighting API authors, characters, protagonists in honor of Asian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And so I really want to take a moment to thank all of our classified employees, all of our teachers for the work that they do. Was able to participate in many of our commencement ceremonies alongside my fellow board members. A very exciting time of the year. And then finally, on a smaller note, as you mentioned today, I successfully defended my dissertation and earned my PhD from UC Santa Cruz. I do have one request that I want to follow up on, and that is for a report or a list of all of our dual enrollment classes that we offered this past academic school year across the district. And I asked for that to be shared with the board as we look to potentially expand these opportunities for our students. We want to make sure that we're informed about where we currently stand and what we're offering and how we can expand those opportunities, hopefully, in the future. And as I stated previously, I look forward to working with our board and hopefully better aligning our policies to increase the number of our graduates that are college and career ready and that are A through G ready. So thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Blair.
Thank you. Congratulations, Randy. I just also wanted to say the graduations were so wonderful after not having graduations for so long, it feels like so, so long. It was wonderful to be at those and just felt really special to shake all those hands and see those kids. It was awesome. I got to attend the first, well, it was the second, but the first one that I got to go to community engagement session last night at Ridgeview. It was pretty well attended. And that is just such an important, important time for us. And I just want to encourage every community member, and I really want to encourage students to come. If you can't come, maybe you can drop off a student, I'll I'll take them home. I mean, I I will, if you know me. Anyway, I it it was just great to see parents and community members write, write things down. Grandparents, there were also posters up around the room that were written in Spanish as well as in English. So and to see people writing down their comments in Spanish was amazing. I wanted to to bring up one or one request. I've I've heard from a few different parents and also staff members that there's questions about whether or not parents need to get fingerprinted in order to volunteer at school or to chaperone at school. And I looked through some of the paperwork, and they were conflicting things. And that is an expensive thing to get done. It's eighty dollars to get fingerprinted. So if we are expecting our parents to do that, I would like for this, to see if our school district can pay for it. That feels like the right thing to do. So I would like to get clarity on on that and what what is supposed to happen there. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gabby.
No report.
Ms. Naylor.
I'm going to try to make mine brief, but I just wanted to, I was just so excited about all the graduations. I went to every graduation except for adult school. I had a conflict, but it was just such a great, just such a great honor to be there and see our kids walk across and shake hands. And we haven't done that for so long. It's like, yes, we have a real graduation. I did attend, one of the things I wanted to talk about, though, is I did attend the eighth grade promotion at Ivanhoe. And what a wonderful eighth grade promotion. The principal there, Jesus Gonzalez, first year, very organized. The kids were get went up and gave speeches. Their eighth grade teacher, O C L Garcia, gave a speech, brought tears to my eyes. It's what we are looking for in teachers. When I, when he gave his speech, it was so sincere and from the heart. He embraces those students. And one of the students asked him, you know, Mr. Garcia, why do you do this? You know, why do you, why do you teach when you can get another job paying so much more? And he looked at them and and in his speech, he said, the reason I do this is for you, to see you transition from eighth grade and be successful in life. And it just gave me goosebumps, and I started to cry. I just thought, oh, my goodness, that's the kind of teachers we want for all our kids. Just just amazing. I did attend the community engagement forum also last night. And I just, you know, we we had a good show, but I really want our parents and our community to please attend those and take the survey. It it is critical to the success of our district because we want that input. And our new superintendent is putting these on to get the input from our, from our parents, from our students, from our, from our community. You don't even have to have a student in our district from our community to to give us information so that we can incorporate that in moving forward with our district. So please continue to do that. One more thing, I did tour Four Creeks Elementary, and the principal there, Miss Montoya, I just want to give a shout out because she's doing a wonderful job at Four Creeks. And the kids, it shows in the kids' eyes, they were just all excited. They would run up to her and they, you know, hey, look at me, this is what I've done. And she she is just so amazing with those kids. So thank you to the staff, you know, it shows that they care.
Ms. Gomonia.
I have no report tonight.
I have a long report, but I'm not going to go over all the graduations. What I will do is highlight a few few things. On May twenty fifth, we had the medical completion ceremony at Ridgeview. It was a very nice, it's, these are things that are not part of the graduation thing, but they're they're special. On May twenty second, we had had a special school board meeting, student recognition at Golden West High School. On June first, I was able to tour Mountain View Vista, Dull Emergeon with Ms. Gomonia and Ms. Blair, which are wonderful program they have over there. On June third, I also went to the Valley of Promotion, and we all split up. They're all on the same day, so we can't be everywhere, so we're at different places. And then on June eighth, the staff, I went to the staff engagement at Golden West High School. So that was one of the engagements that was going on at that at that high school that you're talking about, Ms. Naylor. And then on June eighth, I attended the bond oversight. And yes, I attended all the high school graduations that occurred in the last two weeks. Mr. Schrum.
Well, thank you. I know Interim Superintendent Cardozo would definitely want to express his appreciation for all of the people that have just showered him with appreciation among, you know, for his retirement. So definitely want to thank staff and everyone for attending. Also, to everything we've heard tonight, a lot of work and effort goes into all of these end of the year ceremonies and recognitions from elementary to middle to high, pathway completers, graduations. And it takes lots and lots of people, lots and lots of time to put that together. And I know our community appreciated that, being able to have these events again after so long. So huge shout out to the staff and schools and everyone that that took time to put those those things together. And I just, again, want to echo, just thank you for our partnership with our Visalia Police Department. You know, as we move forward together, we know Uh you know, as we move forward together, we know that safety, security, clarifying our policies on on what it takes to be a volunteer and visitor are all important. We've got to be clear about that, we've got to communicate that and uh make sure that our community feels welcome back in our schools again in the right way. Uh and the safe way. And uh looking forward to beginning to continue. Uh our entry plan and and that work and gather the voices as we put this together into what. It will be looking like as we move forward together. And so thank you for the opportunity to present that tonight. And that will conclude the report.
Staff dismissal. Our next item on the agenda is administrative panel recommendations. This is enclosure number thirty six. Is there a motion?
All motion to approve.
All second.
Motion by Ms. Uh Gabby and second by Ms. Nader, all in favor? Ms. Blair, sorry, I keep doing, I'm doing that tonight. Okay.
All right, so um. Board Member Blair.
You mean Naylor. We're both five foot, yes.
Um.
Board Member Gabby.
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero.
Yes.
Board Member Naylor.
Yes.
Board Member Vegas.
Yes.
Motion carries five uh six, one absent.
Our next item is recommended reinstatements enclosure thirty seven. Is there a motion?
All motion.
Motion by Dr. Vegas, is there a second? Second by Ms. Nader. All in favor?
The Board Member Gabby.
Yes.
I vote yes. Board Member Guerrero.
Yes.
Board Member Naylor.
Yes.
Board Member Vegas.
Yes.
Board Member Blair.
Yes.
Motion carries six, one absent.
Our next item on the agenda is a Transfinder software adoption proposal first read, Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Curve, Chief Operations Officer.
There we go. Good evening, Board President Guerrero. Incoming Superintendent Trump, board members, my name is Rick Hamilton. We'll just leave it as administrator right now and you guys can fill in the rest later. Um so tonight, we're going to bring forward a project that we started about six months ago, looking to. I would say upgrade, but upgrade is a is a very strong term for where we're going. Um we're moving from paper pencil, tracking our students on buses to electronically tracking our students on buses. So take that as an upgrade. Because we know we needed to be able to not disroute our students effectively, but track who was on our buses and where they are on our buses. So that's that's the point of Transfinder system. Um Transfinder is the largest transportation service company in the United States. Um they have submitted that basically they tra- they transport one out of every five students that are transported in the United States right now. So they they are the company to work with. Um and after reviewing and working with with our all the vendors that we looked at. And our transportation company, our transportation company kind of they they reached out and looked over, you know, who who everybody else was using. And this, this is what we came back to. To meet not just the needs of our transportation department, but the community. They are also the largest presence in California, roughly one third of all students transported in California. Are done so using the Transfinder routing process. And then security, um talking with Chuck and his team. Um you know, after our previous experience this last year, we wanted to make sure that the data that are we're tracking our students and and moving our students about was very secure. Um Transfinder uses AWS, which is the the Amazon security, um and they guarantee their uptime. Um within the contract, there there are stipulations, if if they'd have any downtime, then we get a reduction in rate. But they do guarantee their uptime at uh better than ninety nine percent. So that that was one of the, one of the nice features for them. Um a big feature um of their company over others, if you've ever used a map. Google Maps, uh Apple Maps, whatever, um they all use image based mapping. So you get about where somebody is. So you have the address, you ask to go someplace and it gives you about where it's at. Sometimes it's accurate, sometimes not so much. We we can't be not so much when we're transporting our students. Um so Transfinder is the only company that uses GIS, um GPS coordinates on every household. Um and so not only is that important to know where the house is, but which side of the road it is. Because if we're transporting students, we have to know if they're having to cross the street, if we need to provide that service or if they're right or left sided. So. That's a very important feature of our of our routing process. The other big thing for us, um having come from a site and those of you that have worked on a site. Um for the sites to know where kids, what bus they're supposed to be on, where they're going, what what, when they get off the bus. Um so staff have a view only access, so from the sites, they can log into to Transfinder and see. What route, what bus, you know, who's supposed to be where, um which is kind of a nice feature. They can do it on mobile devices, it's not just on the computer, there's apps, you know, so they have all that feature. That's nice for the staff. Nice for for the rest of us, it also integrates with Power School. And that's one of the things you'll see as we bring uh more software features forward. Um in the future is everything has really got to talk to our student information system. Um we've got to get away from the days of, we have all these different systems and they don't talk to each other. Um so it's really important for us that that this works with Power School. Um not just to to share that information so you can look up the the routing information, but as we enroll a new student and put their address in. Overnight, they are routed on the bus if they deserve to be on a bus. And that morning, the bus driver gets the new pickup information and it's automatically routed to that to that bus driver. So the students don't delay and mom and dad don't have to drive them for a week while we try to figure out if they belong on a bus or go along on a bus. Um so that's all done on an overnight basis. And then parents, parents get the Amazon app, as we we've kind of jokingly referred to it. So they get an app that tells them how many stops away their their students are. If there's a delay, the parents automatically get a delay, you know, if it's a, if it's a foggy day schedule. We don't have to try to figure out, do we do blackboard, do we do this? How do we message all the parents? Through Transfinder, we just send the parents out that says, you know what, we have a two hour delay, we have an hour delay, we have. Or this specific bus is delayed because of traffic problems. You know, the the city tore up the street, so we're having to reroute, it's going to take us a little longer. So we can send that to those parents very specifically and very targeted, and we don't have to worry about that communication problem. And then parents that are that are a little more sophisticated and very time constrained, um they can set up um in that same app for them. Um if they need a warning, like I'm I'm walking, it takes me five minutes, I want a five minute warning before the bus arrives, they can set that up on the app. And so they need, you know, one to leave the house or when to make sure they're at the bus stop to meet their student. Rather than hoping that they're going to be there at the right time um to make it all work. And for our bus drivers, some of the most important people for the app. Um they get turn by turn directions that are updated, so hot live, so if there's traffic issues. If there's construction that needs to reroute, they automatically get rerouted. Yeah, like I said before, if we add new students, as we enroll students throughout the year, they automatically get rerouted, the bus driver doesn't have to, you know, figure out where they're going. If we have subs and we're replacement bus drivers, they get in, turn on the tablet, it tells them where to go, they don't have to try to figure it out with with different. Paper maps. So it's 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 all right there for them on the fly. And then this also, not only does it work with Power School, but you know, a few years ago, you approved a purchase of Zonar. Um with the the Z Pass system that 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 does the RFID scanning for attendance. Um we didn't quite get to roll it out because it didn't work with the the other system that we tried. Um this one does integrate with. Transfinder, so we can use those same ID cards, reprint, redistribute the ID cards. As students walk on the bus, they're automatically registered and attendance is taken. When they get off the bus, it tells us when they got off the bus. So if they're older students and they just jump off the bus someplace, we can tell the parents, hey, they got off two stops ago. So we we will actually know, one will be nice to know who's on the buses, but we'll know when they get on and when they get off as well. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to my good friend, Mr. Care.
Good evening. Well, I do want to thank Mr. Hamilton and you know, I think um we found our right guy to do this work, yeah, right? Thank you, Rick. So we'll finish up with this really quick. Let me see, where's the button? There it is. Okay, so we can get ridership reports. So along with all the other tech that we have with this, there are all kinds of reports, there's the report builder. Application in there, so we can get ridership reports. It will, as Rick said earlier, uh tie right into Power School, so. Whatever we get from Power School, we can create these reports and and we'll have them, we'll be able to kind of tailor them to our needs. Another big piece of this is field trips and trips for school sites. And so this is part of the app that we're uh getting with this with this package. Um school staff can uh request the trips, sports trips, and then we can set up the approval process for who's ever going to. Uh approve those based at this, either at the site level or the district level. Um again, there's a mobile app for that, so coaches, athletic directors, uh teachers can do it right on their phone. So that will be really cool. Um and then here's some of the summaries. Oh, I turned it off, there we go. Um so we've got route planning with accurate maps, as Rick mentioned, internal communication, that's very robust. That was a big piece that we said we needed to have, be able to communicate to the parents uh without going through an awkward third party or another third. Uh application. Parent communication goes right along with that, and then communications with drivers, the driver app with turn by turn. And then Zonars RFID Z Pass, um we'll be able to roll that out. Um we do plan on piloting this, um starting at the beginning of the school year. Um we're thinking, we're not quite sure, we're still working out those plans, but we're thinking we will, we will have a special ed component to that. Because that is, that is a population that does present some additional challenges for us. And then we do plan an implementation in January. Uh Transfinder has already uh is already building those plans out for us. And we will backwards plan that and then communicate that as we go forward, should you choose to approve this in two weeks, so. Um here are the costs. Initial cost is eighty two thousand three hundred ninety dollars, that's the first initial cost as long. As well as the first year fee, and then ongoing fees of thirty four thousand two hundred and seventy. It shows you right there, that is literally everything on on Transfinder's menu. Uh it with the exception of the real time, um the real time app for the parents, which we felt was. A little bit uh too intrusive, I guess, way to put it. Um that's the one that kind of shows where the bus is moving around. We didn't think that that was something that we would be interested in. And that's it.
Questions or comments from the board? Ms. Taylor.
Um so the the initial setup, who puts all this information in? Do they do that?
Transfinder does it. We will send them our, we will send them our Power School files. Power School, we'll send them the data files and then they will build it. And they they provide, they're providing onsite training for whomever we need training and then follow up training. Um it's it's unlimited for that, for as long as we have Transfinder, we have training from them.
I love this, this is great.
Yeah, thank you. We're really excited about it.
Any other questions or comments? So um.
Oh.
This is a first read.
First read.
It's gonna come back to us, at that time, we'll take a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Uh it was more for just a comment, I was just gonna say, should we approve this in uh the next meeting, I think it would just be wonderful to. Uh find a way to communicate the app and all these features to parents, because oftentimes it's like. We have all these amazing things, but then parents don't know that they can download this to their app and they can connect it. So I just, I would just request that we find some way to inform parents about. These features, et cetera.
That is all part of Transfinder's implementation plan, which is pretty extensive. We've, we've seen a couple of presentations on it now, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is board member attendance at California School Board Association Annual Conference, enclosure number thirty nine, Mr. Strum.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Board, this is uh to consider taking action to approve the district covering. Our CSBA conference registration fees, travel related costs for board members, superintendent cabinet members, this is annual training. Uh occurring this year, December first through the third in San Diego. Uh and um that is for the board to consider approving.
Thank you. Um the this conference is annual and there are elections this time of year, this time uh in November. And what I want to mention is this, is that the board makes decisions for the board, this board or any future boards. And so whatever decision we make here, and I would hope that the decision would be that we would vote to register the full board, all seven members. Whoever it is, and uh I'll just, if we can, if we could do that tonight, thank you, that's my comments. Any other comments by by the board?
I'll just motion.
Motion by Ms. Blair.
All second.
Second by Ms. Gabby. All in favor?
President Guerrero.
Yes.
A board member Naylor.
Yes.
Board Member Vegas.
Yes.
Board Member Blair.
Yes.
Board Member Gabby.
Yes.
I vote yes, motion carries five, one absent.
Okay, the declaration of need for fully qualified educator educators, enclosure number forty, Didi Somovia, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening, board members, um President Guerrero and Superintendent Trump. I'm here for the declaration um for the need of fully um qualified educators. Each year, we're required by the teacher, California Commission on Teacher Credentialing. To declare um needs in our district and if we intend to hire anyone that is not on a full credential. And so we have to do estimates, if you will, we have to do one for the school district and then each of our charter schools. So you'll see a couple of different. Items within this one, if you will. And again, these are estimates and we're just going off of um how many we've done in the past in each of these areas. So we do need approval to be able to submit this um in order to continue hiring for the year.
This is an action item, is there, are there any comments or questions? Okay, it is an action item, is there a motion?
I would motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Gabby.
All second.
Second by Dr. Vegas. All in favor?
Board Member Naylor.
Yes.
Board Member Vegas.
Yes.
Board Member Blair.
Yes.
Board Member Gabby.
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero.
Yes.
Motion carries six, one absent.
Our next item on the agenda is classified school employee teacher credentialing program, enclosure number forty one, Didi Somovia, Assistant Superintendent.
I'm excited to bring this um item to you the um this evening, our educator support. Um group within HR that does all of our um admin induction and our teacher induction is also um. Already completed two classified grants, this is classified staff members that we help. In the way of mentoring, in the way of tools and in money um to help them become teachers. Um and so we're looking at any of our classified members that want to go into the teaching field, they are assigned a mentor, they have to apply for this grant. Um but it really does help them to get them into the classroom. We have lots of amazing staff members um that serve as peer professionals and other. Um areas that really would be great teachers. So this helps them. So we're applying for this grant, this is the third one we've done. One has sunsetted two years ago, one since it's this year. Um so in a couple of days, and we're applying for another one, so we can continue to help our classified staff.
Any questions or comments from board members? Okay, is there a motion?
No, I think it's a great program, so a motion, go ahead. All second.
Motion by Ms. Gabby, second by Ms. Nader, all in favor?
Board Member Vegas.
Yes.
Board Member Blair.
Yes.
Board Member Gabby.
Yes.
I vote yes. President Guerrero.
Yes.
Board Member Naylor.
Yes.
Motion carries six, one absent.
There are no more items on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.